Thirty-seven, I'm gonna call it to order now because we're all here.
Round the board.
All right. Welcome. I guess the first order of business with this many board members and this much public would be to go through and introduce ourselves to the board and then if you could just state your name for the record when we go around to you.
I'm Joe Winrick, I'm the Chair of the Board. I am from the town of Townsend.
Emily?
Emily Long from Newfoundland.
Stephen John Superintendent.
Dorit Norfman Principal.
I come from Marlboro by the way.
Melanie Zulinski Director of Student Services.
Julian Plumador Student from Wyndham.
Jeremy Callaway from Newfoundland.
Tom Madadi from Newfoundland.
Ali De Cooley from West Townsend.
Patty Dixon Jamaica.
Kelly Warner from Newfoundland.
Lyndal Ball from Brookline.
Twyla Holden from Townsend.
Bruce Parlam and Jamaica.
Bud De Bonis Chief Financial Officer from the Flatlands.
Peter Barris Minutes Reporter.
Michelle Omen listed Brookline.
Gerald Rillian Cissé from South Newfoundland, but I teach Spanish at the school.
Sue Jones from South Newfoundland, I teach Family and Consumer Science and Health.
Susie Guthamore South Newfoundland, I'm the School Social Worker.
Barbara Marchant, I'm from Townsend and I am the School Librarian.
Thank you. All right. Go.
Kevin Berth, Wordsboro, I'm the IT Coordinator.
You're obscured by the pillar. I didn't know you were there. You want to actually like go sideways.
I'll jump up and down when I need to.
Thanks. Sorry about that. All right. The next item on the agenda would be items that the members of the public wanted to bring the attention of the Board. Is there something other than an agenda item that's listed later that anyone wanted to discuss? All right. Does anyone have any revisions or corrections to the agenda? Steven?
Under the consent agenda, you can strike the policy G-11. We don't have that ready to be worn. My apologies to the Policy Committee for not having that ready yet. But I do believe there will be action. I guess it'd be under new business, right Bruce, regarding policy F-7 on drugs and alcohol?
That sounds good.
We should put it there?
All right.
And I guess we're crossing off, well, the consent agenda, I guess will get changed later.
Yeah, that's just what I said, Bruce. Okay.
Yeah.
Strike that.
Yep. We can pull that out. All right. Yep. That's it for revisions? Any corrections? Anything else? Okay. Under correspondence, I'm tempted to use that. I guess we all got the letter from Doren, which sort of deals with agenda. It ties in with both the budget and the Act 46 discussions. I guess I'd be inclined to take that up under one of those discussions rather than treat it as a separate item. Does anybody else have any other correspondence they've received? Yes?
I got it in the form of an email, but Steven encouraged me to share this correspondence with you all. This is an email from Tammy Mosher, who is the, what's her role? She's, I guess, she has a leading role with the Stratton Foundation and she wrote an email to Laura Hazard and me regarding our participation in a short movie they're making about the giving of the Stratton Foundation because they give donations to both of our schools, specifically to Leland and Gray for the dental program. And so she wrote, "I just couldn't let another moment go by without thanking all of you for your incredibly thoughtful contribution to the giving movie today. You all stepped out of your comfort zones, gave your time and travel to make what we believe will be a wonderful tool in communicating what the foundation is doing in the community in partnership with all of you and to inspire giving. Thank you for your heartfelt stories and for being the faces of those we are all trying to help. We are so touched and grateful. Fondly, Tammy."
Nice.
Nice.
Peter and the public, Laura Hazard is the Principal of Jamaica Village School. That's the other person that was part of this thank you note.
Laura?
Laura Hazard. H-A-Z-A-R-D.
All right. Next up, Doren, you want to take us through the budget rationale?
Sure. Does everyone have a copy?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Hopefully I didn't just give you my copy.
I can make copies for anybody.
Do we need some more?
We do need some more copies then.
We got five at least here. How many on the Board? Two, six, seven?
I have one.
Eight, make eight.
Okay.
You can go ahead and start, it doesn't really have to be follow along.
Okay. And I'm hoping Bud will jump in frequently when it comes to the numbers and any explanations regarding those figures. In the introduction, I talk about the member towns of our union school as well as listing the other towns who are sending children to attend grade seven through four up to twelve and about our alignment, collaborations with the union elementary schools and that the goal of this budget is to strike a balance between our high-quality curricular and co-curricular programs and fiscal responsibility without undue burden on our local taxpayers. Just reading from the first paragraph there. Certainly with regard to Act 46, an act relating to making amendments to education funding, education spending, and education governance, this makes an impact on Leland and Gray's school budget. Bud and I have been working very closely with Melanie Zulinski as well on creating a budget so that we do not exceed the spending threshold, which is a new restriction that has been created for all of the schools, public schools in Vermont. So for Leland and Gray, the maximum spending increase can be 1.24 percent for equalized pupil. So Bud, do you have any new information about, from the Vermont Agency of Education regarding that?
There's nothing new from the AOE. However, this afternoon, I did send an email to the Board and to you, Doren, and Steven, I don't know if you had a chance to see it. I did do an analysis of the, our estimated equalized pupil count. We are under a hold harmless provision, which limits our drop in equalized pupils to no more than 3.5 percent. And based on the estimate of other revenues, and maybe I should back up a little bit, the threshold is a education spending per equalized pupil. It's not budget per equalized pupil, it's not budget per pupil. So you take all your other revenues out of the total spending, that gives you your education spending, and you do the analysis of the equalized pupils. And I'll share this again in more detail perhaps later in the agenda, but based on that analysis as we sit here right now, this proposed budget will bring us under the threshold.
Do you want to talk about the third paragraph here that's in the rationale where it speaks to what the penalty is when you exceed, when a town exceeds, a school budget exceeds the threshold, that it becomes a penalty of $2 tax for each dollar spent on the threshold. So Bud, it is about education spending. When you look at the total percentage of increase in the Leland and Gray budget comparing last year, that is our current year, 2015, 16, to next year, 2016, 17, it is an increase of 3.23 percent. But this increase is allowable within the threshold since Leland and Gray is transferring these funds from the state to special education placements. These are students placed outside of our school. So actually, our proposed increase of 1.24 percent remains within the spending threshold because the added revenue increasing the budget to 3.23 percent will not incur any tax penalties. So this will be a challenge to explain to the community in that it appears that we have this increase because that's how it has to appear. Bud, in fact, in terms of the change in tax rate impact, and again Bud just jumped in if I'm misspeaking.
Well, I will, and this is, what I haven't done yet is done any kind of tax calculations. And to some extent, it's premature because there's certain information that we need from the Agency of Education to be able to do that. But as I look at this budget and that revenue analysis I did this afternoon, it looks like we're not going to be increasing our education spending. We're increasing our special education spending, which is offset largely, particularly with state play students, 100 percent reimbursed. We have other increases in special ed that are reimbursed about 56 percent. So we're not, this proposed budget does not significantly increase education spending. So depending on some other parameters that will come from the AOE, we may have, it's hard to say right now, but we may have a tax increase depending on some other factors that could be close to zero.
Sure. Bud, when you say it's not increasing education spending, are you including in that education spending things like transportation and capital and all the other?
Okay.
I just want to make it clear, I want to make it clear what education spending is.
Yes. That's in there, but remember transportation is offset by Transportation Act. So when I'm talking about education spending, I think it's appropriate to look at the revenue side. So when I look at, when I'm talking about education spending, I'm saying that everything that isn't another revenue source, be it a state, a state revenue, special ed reimbursement, transportation reimbursement, state payment for Career Center students, and some subgrants from the SU such as the Consolidated Federal Program and Medicaid, all those come outside of education spending when we're looking at revenue.
So is there a place on the budget where you can point to a line and say, this is the education spending? I mean, you have, in the breakdown that you gave us, is that the current education spending that you give us?
Not the ma, yes. As anticipated for FY '17.
And is that number reflected in the budget anywhere?
It's not, what I sent you before was the expenditure side of the budget. What I sent you today was the first stab at, very quickly at the revenue side of the budget.
All right.
All right. Anything else about that Bud?
Unless there's any question.
Right, any other questions so far?
Not yet.
You know what, we're not going to get it done tonight. Just stay tuned.
So I wanted to remind the Board and the public that over the last two years, the budget increases for Leland and Gray have been minute or none. So for this school year, it was 0.0 change and for the 2014, 14, 15 school year, it was 1.5 percent increase. So this would be a third year of increases far below 2 percent. So when it came to budgetary reductions and increases, we had to analyze our budget and consider student enrollment projections. We expect to have the same number of students next year. We also had to think about Vermont's education quality standards that were adopted in 2014 and they are, in terms of some of the stipulations, it's effective with our class of 2019. So there'll be sophomores next year, as well as overall preparedness for the 21st century global economy. Leland and Gray has a legacy of arts and international education and we have also put a lot of emphasis on science and math and English language arts. So those all are top priorities. We want to provide our students the best of everything we can within our, you know, being physically responsible. So I'll move into the budgetary reductions. Okay? So I have a chart here of small decreases in staff, small for one, but I do want to say that there's a little typo in here. So under, where it says subject area, you can see where it says under visual art, it's a decrease of .17 full-time equivalent. That is the equivalent of one class. So if a teacher is teaching six blocks over eight blocks over the school year, instead of teaching six blocks, that teacher's teaching five. That's what a .17 reduction is. So it's literally of a class. The typo or omission is that the next line, health, physical, it should say physical education beside it. So where it says FTE is 2.5, we don't have two and a half health teachers, it's actually health and phys ed, and there's a small reduction there as well. For the school social worker position, what we are anticipating is a reduction of .2, which is one day a week because our school social worker would be absorbed by two of our elementary schools in the supervisory union, one of which is in Union District, one is, so they're Jamaica and Wordsboro. And most, nearly all the Wordsboro students come to Leland and Gray, so we feel it's a very good investment intervening much earlier, working with students and families.
But that's not your investment, that's to be determined by those two school districts. That's my recommendation.
There is also interest in funding that position through the Stratton Foundation and collaboration with Neighborhood Connections, which is already funding a school social worker position at Townsend. Let's see, it's at a number of the schools, right?
Wordsboro and Jamaica.
Wordsboro and Jamaica as well. So, yes?
Can I just ask a very quick question on that? By cutting down the time here at Leland and Gray, I understand the need for spreading out. Are we still able to cover what we need to without adding? Anybody here? Oh, sorry. It's like a bad.
We always do the best we can.
Yeah, okay. That's a good one.
Do we have too many resources? No. Do we have, you know, sufficient? We try to make it work. Nobody can be proud of, I mean, I can't take any pride in direction of force, it's a necessity because we don't have unlimited resources.
Yeah, it's very important to get out early. I understand that with the kids that are coming in here eventually, but I just wanted to be sure we still have the help that was needed here. But those are good answers. Thank you.
In mathematics, it is a full one FTE reduction. In fact, this school year, when, although we had budgeted for 5.0 teachers, when it came to hiring and distributing contracts, it was for, so this year it's 4.25 math teachers this year. Most of our other subject areas, I shouldn't say most of it, but like science and English each have five teachers and you need four credits in those subjects to graduate. In social studies, which has four FTEs, you need three credits to graduate. So math also, you need three credits to graduate. So it's a little more in alignment with the credit requirement as well, but the decision was based on need and the schedule, so. And it is assumed that next year, the last position listed here is the academy study hall teacher, it's a structured study hall, we call it academy, that we would eliminate that position next year. I need to work more with the faculty on that because it has, every year at Leland and Gray, we have tried to find other ways that there's no need for academy or study hall, although it's beneficial for many students, especially during athletic seasons when it's the only time they have to work on their studies. The thinking was that teachers may be able to cover that as an instructional responsibility so it's not a para educator duty and that way we could provide more targeted interventions. This is a budget draft right now and so there's a little more work to be done and that is one of those areas that we would determine if we need to have that position or not. And that's the list of staff reductions. Are there any questions?
That last one makes a lot of sense to me, that the teachers are actually invested in the after-school study. I realize it's more time for them and more commitment.
It's not.
Oh.
Academy's a cluster.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood that. It's still good the teachers are involved, wherever it hurts.
So the different number in math, is that our kids not signing up for math or how do we get by with?
I would, no, it's not because they're not signing up for math. It is a result of better scheduling and being able to place more students into each section. Actually, our enrollment in math has gone up a lot since I'm here. My first year here, six years ago, it was 25 percent of seniors took math, now it's 60 percent of seniors take math. So they're there and we've actually added options like probability and statistics. We're teaching this here as a dual credit course. And of course, detracking so we could eliminate other classes like low-level algebra in the high school. But we also have planned on eliminating a math course, consumer math. We already have a personal finance class called Business and Career Finance. The teacher's with us right here. So while that's not a math class, consumer math is not based on the Common Core State Standards, which is what we're supposed to be basing mathematics on. So it is a very, very small class. There's one section of it this year with fewer than 10 students, so we felt that we could make that shift.
Because I remember in the, one of the question things that you did, you know, the surveys, it was pointed out by students that we didn't have enough programs that helped them deal with life after high school and things, so. But this planning class would kind of suit that.
Yes, yes. And with community-based learning being a graduation requirement, we're anticipating more students will pursue that course as well as co-op because they have aspects of finance in that class and hopefully will be able to do more. Is that a financial literacy class? Consumer math? No, the one that you're replacing, the one that you just mentioned, I'm sorry Sue, I forgot. Career Finance. Career Finance, that's a financial literacy course. Yes, yes.
What are the class sizes approximately?
This year?
Well, yeah.
The full range. I mean, I think we have a PE class with 28 students and some of the, and some classes are very, very small, small number of classes with like two students in them, just a couple. But it's, they're, for example, one is a foreign language level and if they don't make it into that level, then they can't move on to the next one. So we had anticipated more students would be in it, but they made changes in their schedule, so then two weeks of school go by and there's a couple of kids remaining who, that's what they need, that's what they signed up for and so it's a big range.
One more question. What's an example of a course in visual arts that might not happen or that does happen?
It's going to be determined by student signups. That begins in January through March. So this year, we are, one of our teachers who teaches art and computer science, actually there have been fewer art classes chosen and more computer science and it's the same person, so it's been flexible. This year, that person is also doing technology integration with other teachers, so in a sense, a tech integration coach. And she's been doing that for one block a day. I've talked with Steven about the need for that because there's a big learning curve for many teachers in technology and we've talked about the possibility. So I'm seeing that it wouldn't necess, it would be based on course signups of what course wouldn't run, or maybe there's such a demand for it, we have to reduce in the integration technology part of her job. But perhaps, do you want to speak to that?
Well, once again, you're the first budget that's going out. The WCSU budget will not be read until Wednesday publicly at the WCSU Board Meeting and what we really are exploring administratively is how we can not lose the talents and skills of that, particularly individuals affected, and use them to best advantage in the elementary schools via a consolidated federal grant support for professional learning, supporting math and ELA, English Language Arts. But you know, I'm not able to speak definitively about this, but this is the first, you know, this is, Leland and Gray's advantage is you've got to get your budget adopted and get it going quick. So it causes these other decisions to be made and these other efforts to be made to make sure that we're not losing full employee, full-time employment for those people that we really see as essential assets in our, taking the view of the whole WCSU, which is obviously my major concern while serving each individual district. I don't want to equivocate, it's just that I can't commit to that. And the consolidated federal grant will not be applied for until the last of April, the first of May, next spring. That's long after our budgets are voted and done. If you want to make a complicated decision process for budgeting, you probably couldn't dream up a more complicated one than what we have here and you're the first piece of it. But it's just that this is typical and we just had an administrative team meeting today with all the principals about the consolidated federal grant plans for FY '17. So we think that as we proceed, Bud, meeting with the principals and I, we'll be able to put all the pieces together to make it work. And you should hold me accountable for not having set it up properly if I can't pull all that off.
I would like to add that in the health reduction, the .17, we had actually anticipated the person who holds that role being .83 last year, that was what, how the positions combined. But because of the mandate, unfunded mandate by the state of Vermont for personalized learning plans, which are a great idea, we needed to find some way, some faculty level person to carry out the implementation. And so that was able to be shifted around that we could make it a full-time position. And that would likely be the area of the teacher's job that would be hit. Now, even though it's, you know, we're a pre-K through 12 supervisory union and, but the PLPs and much of what is in the education quality standards affect secondary level education much more than the elementary level. And so I'm trying to make the argument of why we would have that support from Wyndham Central and perhaps that part of the consolidated federal grant so we can continue that as well. The number of students who will have personalized learning plans next year will increase by one-third and we do need a faculty member to be overseeing all of that because our counseling department, as Lyndle pointed out, do you have the capacity you need? We do everything we can for our students and we had to identify a way that we could deliver personalized learning plans well, and I think we are. But this budget for next year doesn't reflect that. Other questions about proposed reductions?
I think you're safe.
Okay, so moving to increases. Number one, I'm sure it's headline news, the health insurance increase, expected to go up 7.9 percent in premiums, so that's quite significant. And how, what was the increase for this year, Steven, or Bud?
Four. Four point five.
Four point five.
Keep in mind that a seven point nine percent increase in the healthcare premiums is a seven point nine percent increase for our expenses as employers, for our end of the health premiums, and it is a seven point nine percent increase for the employees in terms of their share. Obviously, they have a smaller share, but it's, you know, it is an increase for everybody around. And I don't want anybody to imagine that it's only an increase for just the employer, for the employee, but.
Does that include dental and vision?
No, each one of those is a separate thing.
No, they're separate, but they're not, we don't have any numbers on those. We don't expect them to be.
I mean, we don't have a vision program. And dental has been pretty stable over the last few years. It's, once you have a dental program in place and people are going to a dentist on a regular basis, you don't have a lot of spikes in usage. So we're not, we haven't been told to expect any increase in dental. And I don't believe we had any last year.
And our dental plan is through a different, you know, different company. We really deal with dental, dealt at dental. And this, our insurance for the health comes through the VisVit and administered by Cross Visual.
Anything else on insurance? This year, Melanie has assumed responsibility for the incident commander emergency system. And I'm going to let her speak to that portion of the budget increase proposed.
Just a little bit of what's happened since assuming that role and responsibility. We had a visit from Robert Evans, who is a consultant for the state of Vermont. He works for, he's a retired state trooper. And the company is Margolis and Healy. Paid us a visit last June and just kind of spoke about building safety and of course, raised my blood pressure about, you know, keeping everyone safe in a crisis situation. And walked through our building and pointed out some areas of concern, things that we could begin to focus on. As you might guess, you could spend lots and lots of money. He did point to the front of our building in terms of security and the main entrance and how the first door is open and to secure that with a camera system for our front office admin assistant Patty Brissette, who would monitor with a, would have a monitor in front of her. So a camera could see out into the front, there would be a buzzer system to bring somebody into that vestibule. So she could see, there'd be another level of security. Two other things would be exterior cameras for the front of our building. We were planning on a couple, but one, we're thinking initially would be on the Dutton to see down the driveway and also in front of our building. And I learned a long time ago, at a conference I was at, at Riviera Uni, which is now Riviera University, is the saying that we're too poor to afford to buy anything but the best. So the camera we're looking at would not have to be replaced very often. So it's expensive, but it has night capacity to see. And the other camera would be positioned on the other side of our building so that you could see the entryway into the school C level and the parking lots. So we were looking at that too, those two cameras, the front office. The other thing you're going to see is, it's called a Knox box. We actually have to partner with the town of Townsend, puts a request in for one. And that's a box that is located in the front of our building, that rescue emergency workers have a key. They can gain access. They would have a key to the Knox box where our keys are located. There would also be a map of the school so that they're familiar with the layout. Other things, as we continue to practice, our required EGRS drills, fire drills, and secure the building drills, we're realizing that we need excellent radio communication. So additional radios, batteries to keep those, you know, up to, in working condition. Also, any repair of our cameras that need to happen during the year are also important to have. One area, you may, you can't quite see it from here, but our librarian purchased some material that's, it adheres to the glass. It allows light in the library windows, but it actually kind of skews the visual. So we're also looking at that as well to put up some privacy. This year, we're looking to number our exterior doors so that you're not going to say, hey, go around the back of the school and get in at the back. So you would say, you'd enter on door number four and so that the rescue workers would know how to enter. And also, this year, to number the exterior windows. So our classroom windows from the exterior are marked as they are on the interior. So it seems like, you know, thirteen thousand ninety-five dollars may seem like a lot, but I think for what we're getting, it's a, it puts us on another higher level of security for the school. Any questions that I could answer?
I'm just curious, has there been any security issues recently or?
You know, the, we, there are times that students get in our building without signing in, former students that we have. What we were told is that some of the incidents, I mean, some of the extreme incidents that make the news, like an active shooter, are very rare and that we may be dealing more with custody issues, angry parents trying to gain access. But we have to prepare. In the School Crisis Guide, there are a number of events from bomb threats to active shooter to flooding to power outages, everything to prepare for. So even in some of those other events where there may be an angry parent trying to get in the school, that security would be very helpful for the front of the school. Does that answer your question?
Is there recording devices to go with the cameras as far as, you know?
We have a security system in place right now that has two cameras on each level, three on C, no, two on, so basically, two cameras on each level. And it goes to a recording device in the server room that records a month of video.
Those are interior?
These are all interior cameras. We bought them two years ago.
Thank you.
Is that reflected in the budget?
It's under, it is a line that you.
I'm looking at here. I just want to make sure.
It's in the building and grounds.
It's in there.
Did you find it, building and grounds, Emily?
The lines plus security supplies under building and grounds.
The bottom of page seven, Emily?
I'm at the bottom of page seven.
It's titled Security Supplies.
Yeah, we got it.
I got it.
Okay. I'll add, this Knox box will be a common feature among all the schools across the SU and is really requested by EMT as well as fire and police.
It was requested before.
Yep. It's going to take a lot longer to get it done.
Transport, a hundred sixty thousand dollars a year for school buses. The state is now doing a study of public transportation in the West River Valley and basically southern Vermont. The current offers bus service between Bellows Falls and Bradwell.
Before we get off on, single line items in the budget, can we just get through the rationale real quick?
Oh, sure.
And then we can start asking the line items. Because I'm sure everybody has gone through the budget and asked questions.
Okay.
But rather than just go off topic, let's finish the last piece of this and then do that, okay?
Yep.
Thanks.
I appreciate the forewarning.
Okay, so any more questions about the security improvements, building security improvements? Nope, okay. So if you want to do the last couple paragraphs.
So on page three, there are three areas where there is an increase of faculty or staff. The first one, I announced last spring when the course enrollments were such that we needed to increase our music FTE. So it was one and two-thirds, one point six seven FTEs planned for this year's budget. But because of course enrollments, we look to increase it and were able to because of some other decreases in the budget. And I had shared that with you and everyone kind of applauded when that happened. It was a nice moment. And we are, the classes did fill and we're anticipating maintaining that next year as well. So that means we would be building it into our budget now as a one point eight three. Any questions about that, music? The other is that we had built into the budget again for this year as the staff in the planning room being one point five FTE. But because of some adjustments we made as well as a shift of responsibilities of the staff in the planning room, this year, they are already, they are already two people, two full-time equivalents. And that we would be budgeting for that next year because of their increased responsibility for the curriculum and implementation of our advisory program and that's seven through twelve, as well as managing attendance. That was necessary because previously it was Melanie's job, but with her very time-consuming, involved work with the incident commander system in collaboration with our local partners as well as with the state and Bradwell, we needed to make a shift there. But equally importantly is that one of the planning staff members is also the five oh four coordinator. So these are students who have a documented learning disability or other significant barrier to their education, but do not qualify for special education services. And those thirty or so students require by law oversight, management, accommodations that we are fully liable to implement, even though no dollars are attached to those needs. And the third area, well, any questions about that in the planning room?
To clarify, our dollars are tied to those needs. There's no federal reimbursement.
Yes, correct. Yeah, important. And the third area is that in continuation of our Journey East programs, for several years, it was funded evenly at thirty-one thousand because we came in at a zero percent increase last year or change, no change in the budget amount. It was requested in talking with those involved that we needed to bring it back to the thirty-one thousand for next year. So that has been built in as well.
Do we get any, do we have any idea? I mean, in the budget, it says something about contracted services. It says professional services. What are we, I mean, what makes the need go from fifteen to thirty-one?
Well, one change is that we don't have any tuition Chinese students this year. So last year, we had four students from China.
Right.
And that is what helped launch Journey East 2016. But Journey East programs continue every year. So in fall 2016, the Mongolians come. We pay for all their expenses when they arrive here, just as they do when we go to China. And so that is one reason. But we do have a decline in funds towards Journey East because we don't have any Chinese students paying tuition to attend here this year. Despite our very best recruitment efforts, there's a lot of public and private schools across America attempting to attract students from China who are perhaps less inclined to come because of this great, you know, things have changed since I went to China in 2012 when America had maybe more stars in the sky for them as possibilities. And that's less in favor now. We're still working on it. We still partner with Fox Consulting Services and our other partners in China in hoping and bringing more students here. Any other questions about professional services or staff?
Add about the Journey East, that I do think the challenge for the school board and administration is to sustain this program. And at one time, we thought that there was a promising source of income from students from abroad. I think that we did everything to qualify for those programs, get them visas and so forth. But on the other end, I do believe it's very challenging for a typical Chinese student who has the training skill and money to come to the United States, to decide to come to a school that has three hundred and fifty students. I dare say there's hardly any school in China with only three hundred and fifty students. I mean, we would appear, we would appear to be, I'm just saying, you know, keep in mind, if you've been to China, that things are pretty big there in terms of schools. And we would be, you know, pretty much off the charts in terms of their comprehension.
So do we know that's, that's one of their impacts, as an aside?
Well, I know that the visiting teachers have commented about the isolation. The Chinese are a cosmopolitan oriented people.
Right, I'm just looking at.
They are trying to get the heck out of the country, the countryside to survive. So, you know, we are, we are in a different stage of social development evolution here.
Also, they've been big headlines in the Boston Globe recently and how the universities are hurting because of the Chinese economy. They're just not getting the students coming over that they've had. So they're feeling it budget-wise as well, not just us.
I think we're also seeing some very vigorous competition from area private schools.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Same size, sometimes even smaller, but private.
I'd say one of the best things we are doing to attract students here is the summer Chinese-American camps where community members open up their homes and host one or two Chinese students. And our students become counselors in the program. And I don't know if any of you were there, Joe, you were there last summer, right?
Yeah.
When they, the tearful, I mean, crying goodbye, saying, I love you, mom and dad, after spending one or two weeks in their homes and having one of their best times of their lives, never having heard frogs, never being able to see the stars, enjoying the fresh air. And so, well, yes, they're very cosmopolitan. The kids intuitively feel how special and authentic this kind of living is. So they usually, those kids come between the ages of twelve and fifteen. So maybe they'll come here for their, I mean, really, their best ticket is to come here for their senior year and then be launched into the American university system. So he's only done that maybe two summers, maybe three. And so I'm hoping that that supports us in that direction too. Certainly, the kids feel like they can't wait to come back.
Good investment in the future.
And that doesn't cost us any money, that program, that's self-sustaining.
So I'm looking at, you know, different areas of the direct instruction sections of the budget. And, you know, like every year, there's increases and decreases throughout the budget, especially in specific departments. But, and you've explained a lot of them. I mean, you've explained the music increase and you've explained the Journey East. But I wondered if you could just expand on a few others that pop out at me.
Can we wait, do this one the same as how?
Well, she just asked the question about any other direct instructions. So I said, I'll hold it if you want.
I thought it was just professional services within Journey East. I mean, the special education.
That's fine, I'm going to ask the question either way.
Yeah.
All right, just dealing with that one paragraph. No more questions, right? We're
in the last one.
Okay, so in terms of special education, maybe just want to read along because I don't want to get anything wrong. Special education is in collaboration with Wyndham Central and they try to make services as efficient and effective as possible. So it's not budget decisions that were made by Melanie and me, but we're informed of from the Wyndham Central Special Education Services. So the major increase in special education is due to outside placements for several high-need students. The placements for students from union school member towns will cost four hundred sixty-two thousand three hundred seventy, an increase of one hundred nineteen thousand five twenty-two. of 119,522, 35 percent in tuition costs over the current school year. In addition, the on-campus special education costs for Leland and Gray are up 8.9 percent. The increase is based on student needs for speech and language services. This incidence and its associated cost increases are occurring at schools throughout Vermont. The total cost of special education at Leland and Gray in 2016-17 will be 1,715,236. This includes 462,370 for outside placements, and 1,252,866 for students with special education services on campus, which is a 14 percent increase over the current school year.
Total, 14 percent.
You have a question?
Yeah, and these are all incurred from federally mandated IEPs for each student. This is not in any way an arbitrary.
No.
It's a long process of testing and planning with a committee, right?
Yeah.
And how much is reimbursed? I'm sure it shows, I just, it shows.
There's several levels. If the student is a state-placed student, it's 100 percent reimbursement. For expenditures for an individual student in excess of $50,000, there's a 90 percent reimbursement, and then for everything else, it's, I believe, 56.5 percent.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I think we can go basically now to the general questions that I've asked two of you to hang on to. Howie, if you don't mind, ladies first.
No, Howie, you go ahead.
Either one of you can jump in and ask a question at this point.
We were projecting $160,000 a year for school buses. Somehow, the Current manages to provide rides for people for like a dollar or $2 per ride. I'm not sure how many actual trips this $160,000 works out to. And I would like to have maybe Bud work out that number. In other words, how many student trips are we, what is the cost per student trip? Because the state is now doing a study of public transportation options in the region. Somehow, the Current has come up with funding to subsidize their buses, because I can't believe it costs, you know, that they're making money at a dollar a trip. If we could get the Current to run a bus up and down Route 30 and charge that's timed with our school being in session, this $160,000 could go toward a public bus that runs up and down the road, instead of our private school buses that have no other occupants but kids. So what I'm looking for is to see maybe the administration reach out to the State Transportation Department and the Current to see about, instead of having our kids take yellow school buses to school, use our kids as the anchor to fund a public bus that would take not only our kids to school, but would take townspeople up and down the road to work and to school. So that's my observation about transportation issue.
Yeah, I've been working on that for about 10 years. The, you haven't heard anything about it because there's not much happening, but in fact, you are correct, the Wyndham Regional Planning Commission got a grant from the state to be able to study this issue on the Route 30 corridor, so-called, and took that study all the way up past Jamaica. They don't think that they'll be able to do a pilot farther than probably Townsend, although maybe Jamaica will get included, that remains to be seen. I'm waiting to hear whether the final grants are going to be, you know, awarded so that the Current, which is now combined with the B, that all those buses got together. And I've been arguing, and Dolly, sorry, Pierre Gould's wife, what's her name?
Molly Burke.
Molly Burke is on the Transportation Committee, and I've been to a number of meetings earlier with her. She's aware of the issue. The problem is that there is a silo of legal laws regarding the sacredness of yellow buses and how students have to be on yellow buses to be safe. Now, those entities that come from other cities already know that kids can ride the public bus system of Boston or wherever to get to school, and it doesn't seem to bother them too much. But it is an issue here in our state, and so there are some legal hurdles that have to be overcome for us to just automatically send all of our kids on a public bus system. We would obviously subsidize it because there's no free lunch out there, and I certainly have assured the Wyndham Regional Commission by letter that within our budget, we could support, to some degree, no longer contracting for a separate yellow bus, particularly for the Career Center run, that's the place to start because that's the most logical, and I've given them the times and the locations for the stops that could work for our students. And so I haven't gotten anything pinned down yet, and so therefore I can't include it in our budget. But I do keep knocking on wood that someday this is going to happen, Howie, and I'm going to keep after it till we get there, because it really is terrible to see us contract for this huge yellow bus to go back and forth down there and not be part of a more coherent system that serves more than just these students that are going to the Career Center.
And to sort of follow up on what Howie's saying, is there a way to look at this from the opposite side if we're struggling with the security and the need for using school buses, which don't have seatbelts, just so I'll say? Can we, can we look at, you know, starting in Jamaica and going down and then meeting the Current so we could bring down residents on school buses as opposed to using simply the Current to bring down our students? I mean, does it, can it work that way? I think, you know, however, there's often capacity on our school buses.
There's often, there's unused capacity. We spend $9 million, this is the last study that I was part of, we did, we spent $9 million in Wyndham County for transportation, including the subsidies to the Current and so forth, and all our school buses in the county, and we don't get $9 million worth of value out of that. So if you divided it by the people and the hours and the kids running or the trips, as you said, Howie, it'd be pretty expensive. But we do suffer from our regional disparate, you know, diverse, dispersed population, you know, so we're not very good population density, and it's hard to maintain those services in a cost-effective way without a public subsidy. But I think that's part, that's, nobody's saying it, you're going to try to get it for free. The question is, how do we reinvest it? Now, to get back to Emily's question, the answer was originally that no, the public can't be riding on the school buses.
Well, you can put kids, you can give kids a bus pass and put them on a public bus.
Yes, you can do that, and parents have a right to send their kids on a public bus as long as that's with their parent's permission. But we can't, we can't order them to be on a public bus yet, although I'm trying to break the ice with this Career Center line, but we can't, the public bus, sorry, the school bus transportation, the yellow bus with the flashes on it is not for public transportation. Change the law.
Yeah, no, but I would say that, like I said, if we could get, if we could get the Current to run the bus.
Yeah.
And just give our kids a bus pass.
This Route 30 corridor is going to serve people at the Grace Cottage, employees there and so forth. That's the key, to get the, to go close to the shift changes for employees as well as combined with our school activities. So it is.
Awesome.
It is maximize efficiency.
Okay, thank you.
And if we get it, it'll go for probably a year, and then we'll see how the ridership goes, see, that's how it'll work. But I do think we'd be able to save some money at the Leland and Gray budget regarding that Career Center bus. And actually, if you really want to know what my dream would be, which I probably won't be around long enough to see it dreamed out, but realized, but I really think that money should be reinvested in making sure that we have the bus run sufficient to support a late start at the high schools. Not everybody agrees on that, so I understand advocating for what I think would be ideal.
I was going to say, question, question that pertains to this, or is it?
No.
New topic to Emily.
I can go after Emily.
Okay.
Actually, Durin's not here, so.
Oh.
It was about direct construction, I don't know if I want to.
What's the, what's the?
The question, I was just asking for, we had some explanations around Journey East and around the music, and there's a lot of ups and downs, but I was just asking for some explanations around the increases in science, driver ed. There's some that we should be asking about that have already been explained that are decreases, and then library, these are ones that just pop out.
Okay, science is up.
And principal's office.
And driver's ed. And principal, that's something that's designated, isn't it, Melanie?
All right, Bud's going to have at it.
In terms of the principal's office?
Yep.
We had had in the current fiscal year, actually, it's Melanie, and she's here, so I'll say, it's a function of where we had her budgeted. So that's actually a correction to have her budgeted in the line item in which she belongs. Before, it was more in counseling than what's really working. Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of driver ed, I think that's a function of, partly a change in staff. Increase in driver ed.
And are we serving more kids or what? I mean, is it increasing?
Well, is it?
Different teacher.
Different teacher. And in, in science, I believe for the current, see, when I built those salaries, what I did is take a look at our current salaries, current expenditure and encumbrance, and worked off of those. I think there may have been an unanticipated column shift in the current year, so we're not actually increasing science, we're actually reflecting what is happening in the current year. Can you confirm that? I will. What's the amount, just to give the public? It's 11, I think?
It's almost 12,000.
12,000 dollars.
11,700.
It has to be some other change than just those column shifts, I think. We'd like to look into that.
Sure.
I'll leave that as a question.
There is not an increase of staff, and we don't anticipate any staff changes next year. So, thanks, Bud.
Let's see, along the same lines, there's a decrease in the art, in art department in the salary line, which you just explained to us, but why is there an increase in health insurance?
Health insurance is very, unfortunately, is very fluid, because, you know, we're developing a budget now, and things can change in terms of individuals. If an individual has a change of circumstance.
Or status, okay.
Or there's a change in staff. So you'll see health insurance going up and down.
Not in conjunction with salary line?
Not necessarily, because, I'll give you a concrete example. My predecessor had family health insurance. I have individual health insurance. There was a savings, unanticipated savings in the WCSU budget when that change in personnel occurred. So if, if I was married with children when I came here, and my son grows up and moves away and gets married a year from April like he's planning, then I don't have a family coverage anymore. So those things change, so that can go up and down. So what, again, what I've done is taken our actual expenditures to date for health insurance plus what's encumbered, that's what we anticipate to spend for the year, and increased that by the 7.9 percent to give you the budget line for 17.
But not taken into account that, in your future projection, you didn't take into account the cut in salaries?
Any, any, any cut in staffing is reflected in this document.
Okay.
Yeah, but perhaps not the.
Not in the line?
Not the health benefit for that category.
Does that make sense?
By individual stu-, yes, I, I mean, not individual students, individual staff member, that's what you're getting at.
Everything that's, everything that's tied to a percentage of salary, FICA, workers' comp, disability, all those things have been.
Okay.
Connected, if you will, in the spreadsheet. As the formula is with the percentage, so when you change the one, number change the rest.
Okay.
But, yeah, okay. And you have another question, Emily?
So what I was trying to get to is changes in programs. And I, you know, I mentioned library.
Yeah, library's 4,000.
Changed, and then there's 18,000 in English, but it's sort of explained the science piece in that it looks like there's some shift, and I'll have to figure that one out, but.
English you say.
And then phys ed is in health, I think you've explained some of that going down.
Yeah.
17, as well as the foreign language going up, you've explained that, but some things you didn't explain, and I just was curious, especially in the English and the library and other things that I mentioned, the science.
Okay, so if you have an explanation for those, you should hear it, otherwise we should take under advisement, get back to the board.
It's fine that it comes.
Get back to the board in this specific.
Fine that it comes at the next meeting, I'm just.
Okay. Going to have to, you know, reconnoitre, make sure these numbers are accurate. Actually, I welcome the public's scrutiny at this point as well regarding those questions. Just convey them to Durin or to me or Bud.
Now or later.
Well, if you wanted for the record, let's have the board first.
I was going to say, I was trying to get, trying to get through any board questions first, and then I'll.
She was going to respond up to you guys.
Are you responding to this?
To the library area, that's all.
Go ahead.
It came up. Well, all right, so the first thing I just want to mention is that the library equipment repair is related to the copier, which has nothing to do with the library, it just lives here, and I wish it could appear somewhere else. Could all the copiers appear in the, you know, because I feel it makes it look like, I mean, that actually has nothing to do with the library. It's the only place on B-level where it can live, and I, I think it makes my budget look higher than it really is. Second, there is a decrease in library periodicals of $2,473. I regret that we don't, we no longer meet with principals to talk about these cuts before it comes to you. We used to, many years ago, sit down and go over it. I think, nobody really, the budget doesn't really match my needs, because library periodicals, you might think that's print magazines, of which I have $300 worth, that's all I have. But the remainder of that money are hundreds and hundreds of eBooks, journals, videos, mostly used, mostly a subscription to Fax on File, which has been requested by the Social Studies Department. I created a table today of how much they're used. The guy who I subscribe from is impressed by the numbers, they're used a lot. And I know Jane Olmsted and Jesse Reuben-Schneider count on those, on that database, which really should go under audiovisual, but audiovisual was removed from my budget line item area a long time ago, I don't know why. So, so library periodicals doesn't really explain what that is. Is that, do you see what I mean?
Yeah, I think if you suggest other language, we can do that.
Yeah.
When the budget appears from budget to budget, though, we keep changing the names, then people get confused, so there is a balance there.
Right, so why would I need any, you know, that many periodicals? I don't, except for a lot of this stuff is online, and it's, and it's not.
So, we're talking about periodicals and online services or subscriptions?
They're online subscriptions that represent hundreds of date, of reference books that we used to buy, but now they're online, and then they get renewed online, so it's really fabulous. So, the other thing is I've had a lot of fun this year introducing my website to teachers, so I'm showing them all this stuff. I find if you send them a link, they don't, they're too busy. You have to sit down and say, let me show you what I have for you. They're thrilled, but I don't know now, should I say, well, just use this until November 2016 because then we're not going to have it anymore? You know, it's, but I think you'll see that the statistics are good if you want to see them, for how those are used.
Can I just clarify for Emily's question as well? The equipment repair, is that what you're saying is the copier?
Yes.
Okay, so that's down $1,000, but what you're suggesting is it really isn't appropriate in this part of the budget.
I don't believe so.
It prefers to be someplace else.
Because it lives in other areas for the office, you know, the office has the copier and the, so, there was one other thing. Oh, I have good news, though. I told this to Stephen earlier. Several years ago, I came to this meeting and I was really cross because I lost my assistant. I don't know that I would want an assistant again, because if I have an assistant, I'm not on the front lines, and to be the only one here most of the time increases my contact with students, and I really like that. So even when there's someone here to cover for me, if there's a lot going on, I don't want to leave because I want to interact with the students. So that was the good news. The bad news is I think my job is more of a whirling dervish because it's just constant, what we used to call it. constant, uh, what do we, we used to call it, um, multitasking, which has come to, come to learn is not possible, but I try and it's fine, but, um, I just wanted to tell you that I'm not cross anymore that I don't have an assistant.
Bud, you have an explanation for the four thousand dollar increase in library there on the first line? That's what everybody is trying to focus on here, that's what Emily's question was.
Okay. That's, that's based on what our system is telling me the current salaries are, why that's different from, uh, what was budgeted is, is something I'll have to explore. I, I can't.
All right. You do have an aide now that's being paid?
No.
No, she covers lunch, and.
All right, so, let's, mark that one, please, let's look into it.
Okay.
If I could speak for a moment to photocopiers?
Um, there, in this building particularly, the copiers are, uh, rather in heavy use. So I've been, uh, I've been in consultation with our, our vendor about the possibility of replacing, uh, some or all of the photocopiers, uh, in this building, uh, and looking to do that in a way that's not going to impact us financially. Uh, part of that has to do is, with how you structure the lease. So, I just want, I know there's been some, uh, noise in the system, if you will, about, about photocopiers and breaking down, and I just wanted to express to anybody who's here that we're, we're working on that.
Sure. The reduction in, um, nurse salary, is that, is change in staff, or?
Yes.
That's substantial.
By the way, that one, right, getting back to drivers ed, that's an increase in, in qualified, qualifications of the change in staff.
Okay, so we're not.
Terms of there.
It's not that we're serving more kids, or expanding our.
Well, it's half, it's half time.
Uh, we used to do.
It's a halftime position.
So it didn't change. Okay.
Howie?
Would it make sense to, uh, have a line item in the budget for a grant writer or assistants in writing grant proposals? I know, Durin, you've had tremendous success when you have time to write grant proposals, but your time's pretty limited, uh, and there are people out there who, you know, we could contract with to help us write these proposals. Would that be a wa-, do you feel that that would be a wise investment on our part, because , you know, we could maybe invest five or ten thousand dollars in having somebody put the hours in for writing some proposals and get a lot more back?
Should I ask you my, my opinion on that?
Yeah.
So.
Would be helpful.
Two thirds or three quarters of the federal grants available for education are for charter schools, so that excludes Vermont entirely, since we don't have charter schools, and the playing field of grant writing is, has shrunk tremendously, even just in the last five years. And so, uh, I would recommend, uh, that perhaps for our Wyndham Central office to consider, particularly with preserving our after-school programs, and, um, there has been some discussion and maybe some action in that regard, and the twenty-one C director has, um, expended considerable energy in writing grants over the last year to preserve the programs without, um, more, uh, burden on the local school budgets. But I'm just not, like, when I get information about, um, uh, grant opportunities, uh, which is much rarer, probably a quarter of what I used to get five or ten years ago, and, is usually very prescribed, we're going to pay you to do this for us in your school, and we will pay you to do this thing that you wouldn't do unless you were doing it for us with our money. So it kind of puts us down a pathway that we had not planned on going, for outcomes that are probably unproven, because they're funding us to do it so they can study it to see if it works. And, I mean, that's sort of narrowing, you know, sort of, um, lumping a lot together, but, uh, I write a grant proposal every year, and, um, here it is November, and I haven't seen one proposal that I thought that was, uh, worth us taking a shot at. So I still want to do it, and my dream is that we would write a proposal for a, uh, for our school to become a community health center, um, which is a grant that was written at, um, Mount Anthony in Bennington, brought in over a million dollars, with the assistance of, uh, what do they call them, earmarks, at the federal level, which are, are forbidden now, which, um, uh, Senator Sanders and, um, Leahy ushered in, and that's not some, and I've talked with their offices before, and that's the first thing they say, we, we don't, we're not allowed to do earmarks anymore, and, and good luck with any kind of federal process, but that, that would be a direction to head in, and conversations we've had with, uh, staff at Grace Cottage, have been, and also with neighborhood connections, have been along those lines. But, um, so no, I, it's a long answer to your question, because this, this idea that the grants out there could help us, ninety-five, two thousand, maybe even two thousand and five, looks very different right now.
Right.
Sorry.
Any more questions from the board?
I have one last, one on direct instruction, um, the reduction in woodworking and tech ed. It's only seven thousand dollars.
Can you just say what page number that is?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, page three of nine. Is that a, is that a?
What's the point three eight to two three six?
That's what I'm asking, if it was a reduction in time, F T. In what, which area?
Seven.
Woodworking or tech ed.
We don't have an answer for that yet.
So one thing I, I could say, but, um, I would, I would ask Bud to follow up on this, is that, um, uh, up until a year or so ago, the woodworking teacher was at point three eight. Now, a person who teaches one block, um, both semesters is a point three three position, for the most part, um, as a full, as a full-time faculty, but a full faculty with responsibilities to go to faculty meetings, professional development, et cetera, is point three three. But that staff member was point three eight, and about a year or so ago, Stephen worked out with him that, in fact, they would shift that to point three three instead of point three eight.
I think there's a correction of the budget previously.
So, I, I remember that, I, I, but I, but what I'm trying to get at is, are we, are we offering less to our students?
No.
In woodworking or in tech ed?
No.
So, just clarify that.
Yeah, it's down a much.
Uh, seven thousand.
Okay. I just have one quick question, I don't know if this is Bud, Durin, what, it's the bottom of page five and the top of page six, the, the, it's listed as media services?
Yeah, well, I can explain that.
There's some sort of a typo there, I'm guessing, right?
Well, one of the things that I've, I've been trying to do since I, I got here is, is work directly from our accounting software, and, uh, actually, Matt Martin pointed this out to me. For whatever reason, in our accounting so- software, instructional technology is referred to as media services. So the next time you see a draft, that title will be different.
I, I'm not, the media services, the numbers don't make sense. The first line on page five is four thousand dollars, the next line is, you know, a hundred and five, three thousand, and thirty-four thousand, and those are the same as the previous year's budget, and it's a hundred and twelve thousand that year, and it's a hundred and forty-seven thousand this year, there's a thirty-four thousand dollar variance increase, and there's no line item for it.
Yep.
I, there's either a line missing, or something, you know, some formula in the spreadsheet didn't work, it's the bottom of five, top of six. There are four lines that match last year's number, and then, and the total's thirty-four thousand on it.
Well, you're right, there's some, there's something.
Something's not right there.
Something's wrong with the formula there.
He's pretty good at the geometry.
So the question, we've got about thirty-four thousand, we need to find out what's right or wrong.
Right.
That formula is messed up, I'm looking at the Excel spreadsheet, and there's no addition in that center column, that's a, it's an entered number. The one to the right has the added, um, numbers, so that center number is wrong.
When you say that center number, can you be very specific?
The one twelve five point two is not a sum number on the spreadsheet, so that's where the typo is.
So that should be one forty-seven, one twenty-two.
I assume that's correct.
Well, that's why you like to have lots of eyes on it.
So could somebody, isn't it fix that and get that back out to us?
There's going to be some other adjustments here, too, I think.
So Kevin, it's, so the last, uh, number on that last line for two, 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 zero is zero.
No, it's, I don't know. That's right.
Then in terms of the change, of all of that add together, it's, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Keep looking.
Anybody else on the board have anything they wanted to bring up? All right, I'll open it to anybody from the public who wanted to ask a question about any of the budget.
I'll speak for foreign language department. Um, so I'm just looking at the numbers also, on what I have here is the, the spreadsheet of the proposed budget, um, and, one of the things that I'm noticing here, it says for textbooks, one thousand nine hundred, and I went through the detail requests for this, and, oops, let me see here, um, I only see any, um, input for any requests from my department for Spanish, from Tom Chen for Chinese, um, nothing from Sarah Birge or Ruth Ann Dunn, who are also going to be teaching French. So that's fine, but when I do my numbers, so for instance, I put in a request for one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars for textbooks, and I'll explain what I mean by textbooks in a minute, Tom Chen put in one thousand, so that's right there, twenty-five hundred seventy-five, two thousand five hundred seventy-five as a request, but, in, under textbooks here, it only shows one thousand nine hundred requested, of which in the variance, it's in parentheses, so nothing's going to be budgeted for it, correct?
So in all, in virtually, if I could answer your question? Or do you want to elaborate some more?
Well, go ahead, and maybe you can help with that.
So for, um, in some areas in the budget, we, um, line item by line item made reductions, as we informed all of the faculty back in, end of September, or, or so, I was beginning of October, that, um, every, because of the reductions that were going to be required, that every, every department would be level funded as a, as a maximum, then it would be reduced from there. And so in some areas, we, uh, had broken out where those reductions were, uh, and in other departments, that was not the case. So if you and your colleagues in the foreign language department make the decision that we don't need to spend the allotted two thousand, where it's listed under supplies, but instead, in one of the other three areas, you can certainly move it within your department, at your discretion.
Okay, so what you're saying then is that two thousand, which is under the proposed FY seventeen column, two thousand is what the foreign language department has for, whether it's textbook, supplies, audio visual, or, so that's just.
Or dues, correct.
Or dues, or whatever, so it's a lump sum of two thousand dollars for all three languages. Okay, because then when I see what's, then on the variance, so where it says six hundred, and then all the other figures are in parentheses, so that's just saying from last year is the fourteen hundred then. So we're increased by six hundred, is what you're saying, for the whole.
But not in total for those areas, so of those four line items that you just mentioned, in total, would, is proposed to be two thousand?
It is proposed to be two thousand, so I just have to, we just have to work it out amongst ourselves. And I guess where I have to say, uh, I just want to let you know, um, this is my second year of using e-texts, so I'm using an online series, I'm no longer buying the hardcover books. Hardcover books run about eighty dollars per book, um, and how long they last, or, are taken care of, or lost, or whatever. I'm using the e-texts now, and so, um, I piloted it last year, and it seems to be successful, where each student has their own license, at a cost, this year it's at, for the proposed budget, it'll be twenty-one dollars per student license. And then, um, so they have the online tech series, but they have all the audio visuals, um, all kinds of access and practice, and it's every bell and whistle you could imagine. So it's, it's very successful. Um, I'm going to talk to the representatives to see, since this is my second year in, for a five-year, um, license, it's even less expensive, I think it's about fifteen dollars per license, so it really is a good savings, plus it just gives the students just broad access. So, because of our reduced budget, when I ordered my series this year, I said to the gentleman, the representative, I can't buy what I need for everybody. I needed sixty-one, um, student licenses to cover all my students for the year, um, and so the representative just came back with a proposal and a quote, and what he did was, he charged me for half of them, gave me half for free, so I ended up only paying for thirty. So for me to enter in my budget, I can't assume that somebody's going to, year to year, give me a discount, so I have to put it in that way, but I'm assuming that, again, he'll make it happen for us to have it. So I guess I, so I just wanted to, one, let you know what the costs are, the benefits of using the e-texts, and I know the I T department is also very much in favor of that, and there's a good thing of having a book and reading it, I don't like to read my computer in bed, I want to look at a textbook, but I have my own, the teacher's edition, but, um, the students seem to benefit from those, so I would, one, encourage that as a possible way for other textbook, um, possibilities, but also then I now understand, so we just have to go and work it out amongst ourselves, what we can or can't have.
Cheryl, thanks for sharing that way of the future. Now, are you saying that it is still more cost-effective to go to the e-text than the textbook?
Well, I would.
Because it depends on how many years you get out of your license, of course.
Right, well, this is, right now, it's twenty-one dollars for one year. For five years, it's fifteen dollars per license. So what I'm going to propose, I was just trying to put a call in the last couple days to the representative, is, um, since we're, this is my second year of doing it, would he sort of retroactively allow me to do a five-year license? But then again, that, that means me coming to the board and say, okay, but I need this number X thousands of dollars, which will cover us for five years. If I did that in textbooks for students, granted, we're not buying new textbooks every year, but.
Right.
We all know that textbooks, they have a very long life.
Kevin?
I just want to add in, um, this is going to be typical going forward, if we want to use technology in the classrooms and e-rate, and ebooks, there's going to be much larger upfront costs, but much more cost savings over the long run. Um, it's difficult to swallow, because we're faced with these kinds of budgets, and we can't look that far forward. We're forced to look at year to year. Um, and it's too bad we can't look ten years out, because the advantage of texts, e-texts and Chromebooks, um, are huge for the learning of these students. Um, but it requires an upfront cost that we can't afford right now.
Yeah.
If there's any way that we could get the grant writer to find that money and other avenues, um, we'd see a huge increase in learning, I could guarantee it, um, but that's, I just want to let you know that that's what we're looking at, is.
Well, just to be clear, I'm sure the board's position is thinking like I am, that we should not tell ourselves that we can't think long-term. The question is, can we persuade, uh, the public, and can we work out the argument that it's cost-effective, beneficial in the long run?
Right.
And as you said, one way to cope with a dramatic increase in initial investment is something that I experienced many times in my career, of the grant to buy, my God, it was, uh, Logo, you know, it was these little Apple computers, like, you know, they cost a gazillion dollars back then. And, and then, of course, when they were passe three years later and so forth, there was no more grants to replace them, and we were ended up spending it again. Now, you know, when I say think long-term, it isn't like buying a house, it is a little different, because it's changing all the time, so, I, I think it's a very important discussion for the public engagement, certainly the board, and certainly administration with the ex, benefiting by the expertise of colleagues in the classroom, uh, to advise us about such matters, but the board can make, you know, planning for the long term. The problem is that a budget can only be voted on an annual basis, uh, in terms of setting the tax rate and so forth, so that's where you, you know, I'm just, you know, trying to clarify for the public's benefit, what, what, there is no, nothing prohibiting us from thinking long-term, except the challenge of getting a budget that is acceptable to the, to the tax, tax-paying voter.
Howie?
The interesting thing about your story to me is that the prices for these licenses are so negotiable. are so negotiable, that there's so much room for bargaining, which makes me think that as we move forward, and more and more, we are switching more and more to licensing textbooks rather than purchasing them, maybe all the teachers who are doing these negotiations should have their deals go through somebody who's an extra good negotiator. In other words, when a teacher, you know, negotiates their contract for their ebooks, maybe, maybe you should be then, maybe the final thing is, well, I have to get this approved, and then it could go on to somebody else who might be able to get a better deal.
Well, and I know, I'm spying a little bit, Howie, because I know you're a strong advocate for Small is Beautiful as I am, but actually, when we talk about cost effective licenses, they are always more cost effective on a per student basis, if you have many more students subscribing. So in fact, I commend Cheryl for her work to get her deal there for her class, but it, you know, I, I know from School Spring or any other service that we're getting online, that they have no concept of anything under 500 or 1,000 users, you know, these businesses. They just, you know, we're microscopic. Let's see, Kevin's nodding his head, I mean, we're just off the charts, you know?
Doesn't mean we can't get discounts.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, in fact, if their business model is not to deal with anybody that small, they don't do it. And that's what I've gotten so far from a very valuable service to us, School Spring, regarding our posting of open positions, which is turning out to be pretty cost, pretty costly per, per opening. And it's not more costly than going to the newspaper, but it is a challenge. So once again, that may be a contributing argument regarding Act 46.
You know, just follow that up with the eighth graders, both seventh and eighth graders this year have the Chromebooks. I'm working with the eighth graders this semester, next semester I'll have the seventh graders. But it's great to have them all come in to the class with their little Chromebooks. And I can really differentiate for the students who need more time, I can even spend the time sitting next to them, who have more challenges, and then the students who just, boom, boom, what can I do next? I'm done with this, whatever. You know, they can just keep going on, it's just a whole world out there on their ebooks. So I really, you know, I appreciate that we've started this with having the Chromebooks for the students in the middle school. It's really made a big difference in the class. Just want to plug in that.
I just have a question.
Yep.
So how long did the regular books last? Like, the average lifespan of hard textbooks?
I mean, I have some that are very, very old and outdated, and, I mean, there's some that I have that have floppy disks in them when we go through the school supplies, and kids are, what's a disk? What's a disk get? So, I mean, they're outdated on some levels. But yeah, I mean, I, we can maintain them. They get ragged, kids draw on them, you know, or they get lost. Average lifespan, like I said, I have some that are from the 80s that I like to use, because they present grammar a certain way, that even some of the more modern ones, when I started working here, I just inherited, so I have them. So I don't know, textbooks, you know, depends on, you know, kids taking care of them.
Yes.
Yeah, so it could be 10 years.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I can't, you gotta jump, Kevin. They're tipping me off on this.
No, a lot of, a lot of the paper-based books will last a lifetime, if you treat them well. The content may not. It does last longer with foreign languages, with English, but with the sciences and some math textbooks, they're outdated within months of being produced. I had a, I teach college classes at CCV, and one of them is local area networks. I was, the book I was using went out of print a month before the classes started, so I had to find a new textbook. I found one that was printed in 2014. I thought, this is great. The students got into it, and they said, this is all Windows 7, we're running Windows 10. And so, you know, within a year, that book was already obsolete. Luckily, it has an online component that I could plug in, which helped, but we, it's going to depend on the book, whether it can be used long term or not. And science and math and the, the classes that are evolving are going to suffer if we get paper texts for them.
You're pretty secure in Greek, I understand.
That's, yes. We still have some of those original texts from a couple thousand years ago.
1896.
Yeah, Latin particularly.
Tammy?
Forgive me if I'm asking a question that was already clarified, but under the physical education and health education salaries, I'm just curious about the 17,000 reduction.
Do you have a copy of the rationale there?
I do, it just tells me that it's a point 117. So there's a reduction in health ed by 0.17, and that's where it comes out of. Now, that doesn't, forgive me if I'm mistaken, perhaps, but clarify, I don't believe it adds up to, 0.17 adds up to 17,000, but that's where a reduction is in staff. So someone's been looking at that number?
So there's 17,000 under health, is that what you're saying in the reduction?
Yeah, because there's a point, yes.
That's what the budget shows year to year? Okay, we'll add it to the list, apparently. Unless you have some comment?
I mean, I, I thought that was more around 11, 12,000, but, but do you know?
I gotta take a little care.
Okay, so we used to check the number, but it is, it does, it's a good catch, and that it does reflect an actual staff reduction.
If there's a change in staffing, it changes the salaries overseas that last.
Okay.
Right.
Are there any more questions? All right.
Well, there're going to be a lot more-
There'll be more as you do the research, right? There's a lot, you're coming back, we'll see another draft of this with some more explanations. As soon as you can get it out to us, that's great, we can ask you questions.
And do you take a look at the background?
If there are more questions as the, as you continue to review this, I'd say email them to me.
Right. Okay, yeah, any board members have some more questions, you email it to Joe, so he's aware of what the issues are, and then you can send it on to us. That would be great. Also, keep in mind, your next meeting is December, your next regular scheduled meeting is December 8. And if the board chooses to have a meeting before then or after then, you may need a meeting following the 8, depending on where you're at, in order to approve a budget. The timeline does require you to approve a budget before the, before the end of the year, in order to meet your requirements for the warning for your annual meeting. The first Wednesday, first Tuesday, the annual vote is first Wednesday of February.
Did you already mention December 1st?
No, I didn't mention.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Okay.
I pointed out they could have other meetings, but-
So back in our last month's board meeting, I had distributed as part of the principal's report, a timeline for the budget process that was also shared with the faculty. It looks like this. And so it was, so this follows previous year's timelines. And so it was proposed that the first Tuesday of December, that this would be our special budget meeting, and we would, you know, promote it as such. And then the next week on December 8, we would vote, you all, as four members, would vote to adopt the budget, or make further changes. But that, so three weeks from now, if that still works for you.
What's the board's pleasure?
I think as long as everything gets answered on the 1st, it could get voted on the 8th.
Right, but what you're saying is confirming that you want to meet on the 1st and the 8th, right?
Because we usually have a special meeting for-
Yeah, we do.
For people to come and, because this is just, guy, now.
Right, we usually do have that meeting.
Yeah, I, I understand the need for another meeting, and I will try to make it work.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure if now is the time, but I feel like I need to say my piece about my position, is-
Please. Come on up.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Sue Jones, I teach family and consumer science in high school health. And through the years, I've slowly seen my family and consumer science position chipped away, chipped away, chipped away. It is not tested in the Common Core, but I really feel very strongly about my curriculum, that it teaches skills that the kids need to, need to have. And I, there are a lot of supports for the family and consumer science education. Some of them, the, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my notes. We want our students to graduate with all the general knowledge we offer, but they're, I'm not downplaying the Common Core, but the skills that they get out of family and consumer science, excuse me, science are everyday life skills. There are supports from the Champlain College Center for Financial Literacy, that in their National Report card on state efforts to improve financial literacy in high schools, Vermont gets a D, because it does not require financial literacy as a graduation requirement. I have the Career Finance class, but it is considered an elective at this point. If any, if you know anybody that went to Leland and Gray, back in my era, we had a class called Senior Survival. I think, Lila, you remember that? And we had to, it was life skills, it was doing your taxes, it was childcare, it was healthy living, it was parenting, it was all of the things that are life skills, and we want our kids to have. The Jump Start Coalition reports that in their National Foundation for Credit Counseling, that only 59% of American adults say that they deserve an A or B when it comes to financial knowledge. And 75% of them agree that they would benefit from personal finance. 60% of American adults work without a budget. In the 2008 national test for the K to 12 personal financial literacy standards, which do exist, high school seniors scored a 48.3 on that test. So our students are leaving without the knowledge that they need to manage their money. Alice Lichtenstein, a Tufts University professor of nutrition sciences, believes there's a direct link between the reduction in family and consumer science classes and pediatric obesity epidemic. She is quoted as saying, "Public health experts, nutritionists, and educators are beginning to realize the lack of basic life skills like cooking presents a serious problem. Americans are growing up ignorant about the whats, whys, and hows of healthy eating." An article in Mother Earth News titled, "Why Home Economics," previously family and, or, family and consumer science was home economics. "Why Home Economics Should Be Mandatory" concludes that producing generation upon generation of people who don't know how to feed themselves healthfully and manage their finances is generating massive cascading societal costs. Even the Journal of American Medical Association reported that bring back home economics education because the instruction of basic food preparation and meal planning skills need to be a part of the long-term solution, again, saying it relates to the pediatric obesity epidemic. Whether we're talking about the approximately 50%, give or take a few percentage points each year, of students who go to college, or the other half of students who enter the workforce, many are leaving here without the skills needed to apply for a job, manage their money, and plan and prepare healthy meals. If they aren't getting taught these skills at home, as we see that 48.3% of them, or 48.3 on the national test, the kids aren't getting this information at school. Therefore, our students need to get this information in school, and it needs to be a requirement for graduation. I think we are seriously doing our students a disservice by not including it as a graduation requirement. And I know there are budgetary restrictions, and the caps, and all of that, but I would like you to seriously consider what we are asking our students to know before they leave here. Thank you.
I just want to reinforce, I think the summary statement there is really the pickle you're in as a board, do we, and administration, do we believe so strongly that this is essential to graduation, that we have it as a requirement? The senior survival, I think, was required at one time, was it not?
It was, yeah, I was in school, yeah.
So it isn't an unthinkable idea, the question is, what does, what best represents your constituency, the communities you serve, in terms of what our students' needs are, and can we afford to reallocate resources to make that requirement, not only a requirement for graduation, but make it accessible and doable for the students? And what, this really requires some reflection discussion with parents and students as to what they trade off. I don't want to run the debate now, but I think you should be prepared to doing, I'm sorry, what would I write? To, you know, be prepared to speak to that issue with students on our board at some time, certainly at their next meeting, if you can make it on December 1st. Because I know students are often obliged by the graduation requirements to make some choices that really they don't find to be in their best interest. I don't know how the multiple pathways and the personalized learning plans will affect this, but that's part of the puzzle as well. So, thank you very much for that conclusion, because that is exactly where the, where the rub lies. You know, we, we don't have as many students signing up for those classes as we once did.
Go ahead.
I think just speak to the financial literacy piece, because this is not an issue that is just here, it's everywhere. And in House Ed last year, we took testimony, extensive testimony about the lack of preparedness for students. And one of the things that passed last year out of the House was, into law, was the childhood savings account program, which includes, you know, it's not a taxpayer impacted thing, it's, there's, there's a grant process where people will donate money for this. And for every child who's, who's born in the state of Vermont, gets a savings account. And those who are low income will get a matching amount, they've got a double amount. I can't write the details around the law right now, but one of the reasons why I supported it so strongly was because it had a financial literacy piece embedded in it, where families will have financial literacy training. You know, they don't take courses, but they will be given materials, and it's really part of the savings program, because what you're saying is absolutely true. People aren't prepared, parents aren't prepared, and children aren't prepared, and there's got to be a change in that. So I'm hoping somewhere down the line, we'll all be a little more prepared, you know, that this is, at least there's a start there for children who are, who are assumed to be born, or just born.
Another challenge for the public school system to remedy and to fix the problems of poverty and, and literacy on a number of different levels, not just reading, but also financial, planning, and nutrition, and math.
Yeah, I, I'm struck by this, this is really very important. And when did it move out of being a compulsory part of graduation? A long time ago, or kind of?
Before I go, before I arrived in 1999.
So it's worth bringing up now, okay.
Senior Survivor?
What?
Mid 80s to 90s, I think. Charlie taught it, he was the last person who taught it a certain way, and he went on a leave.
He was, and then when he left for the leave, they made it non, not required, and then it just fell away. Charlie being my husband. Sorry.
And what your assessment?
One of the famous Charlie, he's on the wall of fame over there.
He's on the wall.
I need the art.
It might have been, I, it was pre-1994, because that's when I met him.
A long time.
So, but it's the one class people talk about and ask about, and say, I still have my folder, and I had to buy a car, so I got out my, my Senior Survivor folder and bought a car, so.
Yeah, it's critical.
Well, yeah, I appreciate that. Part of the aspect of this memory is that Charlie Margant is a charismatic teacher. Whether you think about him one way or the other.
I'm sure the teacher is too.
Well, I, I'm just, no, I'm just saying, though, he's associated with that particular course to such a high degree, social studies.
It started by Bernard Schultz, by the way.
Yeah. Okay. We won't give Charlie entire credit.
Just took it over.
Right, okay. Anyway, if anybody's interested, he's over there on the wall, and he's still alive and down in the day.
And he does a big email very often, but you're welcome to call.
Yeah.
You have something to add, Chloe?
Yeah, I was just wondering, do we have any classes currently in the school besides seventh and eighth grade family and consumer- seventh and eighth grade family and consumer sciences that are anywhere equivalent to Senior Survival?
I have a Career Finance class that we talked about before, yeah. It's an elective.
Yeah, I don't hear much about them.
Can I ask?
There you go.
Sure.
I was just going to say that I also feel that there is a huge service that's available to students that can't be offered in any other class other than Home Economics, and that's, you know, being able to learn how to feed yourself, but also your community. And I think that's a huge, a huge deal, especially as we become more localized in many senses as a socioeconomic structure, as a government, as a state-based organization. I just feel like there's a huge service there, being able to just learn how to feed yourself and your friends and family. Definitely the financial aspect of that, but yes, you're, definitely your testimony really struck me there, for sure, as a farmer. It's a big deal, we can't lose that, so, thank you.
Chloe, go ahead.
I have a question for Sue, that if this reduction of one class over the year, how does that affect your ability to, we need to review the class, let's try to look at the...
It's Career Finance.
Career Finance.
In the proposed schedule, it's in there, there's a couple different sections of it.
So, and I know you did a tremendous amount of work with the personalized learning plans, so is that also still on your plate for next year?
I think so, yes, as well as high school help.
As high school help. So by reducing the position, what are we reducing it?
I'm not sure what's being taken off my plate, so to speak, with my position.
There are two variables in that, Cheryl. One is course requests, what class, so high school primarily, or entirely, and the other is if any funding can be available through grant sources and collaboration with Wyndham Central to offset the costs of the unfunded mandated personalized learning plans, because we do need a teacher managing that. So, and that's part of Sue's role this year, is that we were able to put in addition to her course enrollments, because she does, it's actually second semester that she has a space in her day to work on personalized learning plans. She doesn't have that this year, but nevertheless, she's still going full steam ahead with PLPs this year.
Absolutely. So then I guess my next question would be, with that sort of spending threshold, so it says our budget is coming in below the 1.24%? Is that, so 1.24 was our cap at what we could spend? So what are, where?
We are at 1.24.
We are at it, so we are at it, okay.
Yeah, the administration received direction from the board to make sure we're not putting the taxpayers in a double payment situation, and there certainly is a lot of debate about this allowable growth percentage, which is variable, and the variability you see there is based upon previous spending patterns. So generally, schools that have spent more per pupil have a smaller allowable spending growth percentage than those that don't. I actually have in here, if you'd like to see, the list of all the school districts in the state, and I think the highest allowable spending growth is over 4%, you know, in terms of statewide, because that district spent so little per pupil in the past. Now, there's lots of arguments why that isn't a fair, equitable way to do things, but there's always those arguments. The biggest variable that's uncontrollable by the taxpayers or the administration is the experience and therefore personnel expense of the staff. You know, if we have a staff of 12 teachers and none of them have over five years' experience, you've got a lot lower spending costs than you do if you have a staff that is 12 teachers and all of them have 30 years or more. So, you know, these things, these things don't average out across small school districts. They do from a statewide perspective, but they don't as applied to each of our schools, including Leland and Gray.
And when we're, I know previously when we started the budget process and we were talking about, I had questioned about special ed increases, or just funding of special ed. And again, you know, this year it's less than last year's increase, which was quite high, but still it's a 35% increase, I guess in the tuition costs of sending students out, is that what it says here? Yeah, and so I guess when I asked you before, what are possibilities of other funding sources, since this is, we're following state mandated needs, and yet the taxpayers and then the regular education students will have to deal with those cuts because the increased budget. And again, here, it's just almost half a million for out-of-school placement. So what are possibilities for other funding?
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think we should take the big, there's a way to look at it in the individual school building, but I do think that really, the only solution which many people in college report for many years is for the federal government to actually pay for what they demanded they have done. But that's not going to happen, no matter who gets elected next, okay? So then the question is, what do we have under control that we can do? Now, Marlboro School District Board did propose to all of the other school district boards, including Leland and Gray at the WCSU board level, that the special education costs be borne on an ADM basis, not on a per pupil, depending on whose kids you have and how much they cost.
ADM basis?
Average daily membership. So in that case, Leland and Gray, having 350 students out of 900, would be paying approximately a third of the total special education costs for all the kids in the WCSU. Now, that might go up a little bit, it might go down a little bit, but it'd be pretty stable based on the percentage of students that they have, not just whether they had two high-cost students move into town, or in a smaller school situation, two kids move out or in. That makes the budget of the local school district go up and down quite radically. I mean, this sounds like a lot of money at Leland and Gray, you can imagine what it would do in Wardsborough, or Wyndham, or someplace, you know, much smaller. So unfortunately, none of the boards, well, not a significant sufficient number of the board members voting at the WCSU would, wanted to call the question to have a vote to determine whether they would say yes or no to that. So it was basically table.
To be fair, Marlboro sort of did back off of their proposal.
After two years of hearing of that, you know, about it, Marlboro was at it for two years on this thing, okay? Now, I do think that climate, political climate has changed, and Act 46 raises this question once again. But now, what I understand, Emily may have a different interpretation, I believe some of the boards decided that they didn't want to join into that kind of agreement until they knew who they were with, because with Act 46 being passed last spring, they've got no idea who they're with anymore.
The proposal at the WCSU level didn't include the high school. It was K-6.
Yes, that is true.
From Marlboro.
But, okay, that's a good point, Emily, but let me point out that we could easily have a K-12 district forum that would bear that cost throughout the membership of the students, and the taxpayers of those five towns, if we had a RED. It would accomplish the same thing, right? So it is one of the rationales behind Act 46, and certainly, we're doing everything that we can with separate districts to coordinate our efforts and budget out of the WCSU office. It remains to be seen whether those budgets will get passed, but that's, that's the puzzle, and I commend the public for their interest, and I hope they'll be looking carefully at how to make sure that that vulnerability to special ed costs is not, is avoided to the greatest extent and everybody shares in the load. By the way, the really expensive students are reimbursed at a much higher level, 90% eventually, but you still have to vote as a public on the budget. Right. So, are there any more questions actually dealing with the budget?
I'm curious if there are student members have anything to share, or ask, or opinion, or...
No, not really.
Well, we'll expect more from you at the next meeting.
There won't be a test, though.
Maybe that's what we need to do.
All right, let's keep moving.
Okay, all right. I just realized that we've jumped, like, down the agenda a whole bunch, and we've actually done the whole new business discussing the budget piece, just off of the rationale.
Thank you.
I apologize for screwing the agenda up there. Steven, do you have a superintendent's report?
No comment.
Oh, great. Bud, do you have anything other than the budget?
I do not.
Perfect.
I'm sorry.
Lindell, was there a Career Center meeting?
Unfortunately, there was.
Lindell!
I can do it next time.
I was, well, I was, how much do you want to say?
Do it, make it brief.
Okay, I'll be very quick, and I'm so high on this Career Center that I'll...
Yeah.
Okay, really quick. Two departments presented to us, one was engineering, and they were tied in with the horticulture program. That was really interesting. The horticulture program is raising chickens for meat, but the chickens were overeating, so the poor teacher was having to come in at night and on weekends to prevent the chickens eating. So he approached the engineering department and said, "Could you help me?" So the engineering department came up with robotic caps on the food. And so it was just an amazing example of two departments cooperating to stop these chickens eating. Okay, that's one. The second, horticulture, had very enthusiastic students, they were just incredible, they go out to farms like Scott Farm for apples, they also fixed mowers, ward whackers, and they pointed out how all the pieces fit together, culinary, engineering, horticulture, and they said, very movingly, that these were excellent programs for kids with ADHD and anxiety, that they were able to really get hands-on and see what they could produce and feel very worthwhile about what they were doing. It was a really good thing. And then I won't spend too long on Women Can Do, because we all know women can do, and then the budget, they said was level, no spike in the Learning Center.
Yeah, the Women Can Do project is a summer program, the BTC. You know, Vermont State College.
We know that, Stephen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay.
Sue, how many went this year? I'm sorry.
Mika Oaks, our cooperative education teacher, and I took six or eight kids.
Oh, sorry.
So eight kids from our school.
Eight kids from our school went.
Excuse me, 15, it's an increase.
No, she's talking about the students from our school that went to this...
The one-day-long seminar at BTC.
Oh, dear, I'm sorry, they didn't say that. Hang on.
The Career Center had their own delegation that went, but our school went.
Oh, your school went as well? I'm sorry, I missed that whole thing, you're talking...
We took eight.
Okay, well, it was apparently very successful, and the students that spoke, one is now wants to be a forensic nurse as a result of going, another wants to be an electrician. It really did empower these kids to take on roles they hadn't thought of. I'm sorry, I kind of belittled that, and I didn't, I guess I meant to, but I apologize.
Yes, regarding the engineering program and the hands-on learning and so forth, you may associate that with non-readers, but in fact, one of these students had his head in a book the whole time he was eating lunch.
You were so good, you were so good with him. Other people were chastising this poor student.
All right, we're doing it on brevity till we got to this.
Yeah. Students, I mean, Stephen said to him, "What is that you're reading?", and that's a good book, I mean, he was, he was a good representative.
All right. Moving right along, the Act 46 implementation, WCSU, Leland and Gray's position at the next WCSU board meeting, I suspect someone will move forward trying, with some proposals to study various merger and consolidation pieces. Some of the discussions we've had tonight even give you an idea of how those things could be beneficial. On a larger scale, things are more efficient, you know, there's less cuts for students. If you have more students, you have more dollars to offer these programs. Doesn't mean combining everybody in the same building, but if you're combined under one budget, that's a bigger budget that you have to do that with. Also, I think, you know, I pushed Dorin's letter until now, but she makes some, she makes, raises some interesting points about what the future might hold for Leland and Gray under Act 46, and, you know, given that, what, you know, thoughts on our position? I mean, I know at the last meeting, we talked about keeping an open mind, truthfully, we don't get to enter into the study, right? It's the towns. Our board just kind of sits on the side, and our member towns go in, but we can urge our towns to, although I don't think we really need to do that. The members of the study committee would be appointed by the school district boards of the members of the Union School District for a RED study, just as was the case in the past, because it's actually following the same guidelines from 156, Act 156. Yes, I think, if anybody else was there, wanted to share something from the meeting observation? Yeah?
Yeah, I was very frustrated, and I feel we, I don't really agree with Joe, I don't think we sit on the sideline. I think we, as a board, have to come up with a proposal that we're going to endorse. And I know we're part of the bigger WCSU, I know we feed into that through our representatives, but shouldn't we be letting our representatives know what we would want under Act 46? I'm getting very frustrated by hearing the same presentations, and we're just...
I don't think he was saying that we should sit on the sidelines, I think he was saying there's a legal aspect to our involvement.
Right, I know that, but shouldn't we be, as a board...
Well, the way we handled it the last time under 153 and the RED study was that we asked, we as a board made a decision to ask our member towns to appoint at least one of us from each town, if possible, and we weren't able to do that, because you need to have one member from a school board in your school district, town, your town, school district, on that study committee. So both Brookline and Wyndham had to have one of their town school district members on that study committee, but the other towns appointed, all towns in Jamaica and New Fane all voted to have high school student, I mean, high school board members on that committee. I would be surprised if they didn't do the same thing the next time, if we entered into a study like that. It hasn't been decided yet, what the study is.
No, but when are we going to decide? I mean, time is really moving along here.
We meet on the 18th.
The 18th of November, the next meeting.
But shouldn't we, as a board, come to some conclusion about what we want?
If you can.
I doubt we can, but I'm very frustrated at not entering into that discussion. I realize the time is late, Sue.
If I can give just the update on the Woodham Center.
Yeah, sure.
Just very briefly, there's, you know, because we left that meeting late, without really discussion, Rich has been looking into possibly getting the boards to approve going into, what's the term?
Side-by-side.
No, no, it's the, it's the study, the $5,000 study for...
Luminary study, huh?
What do you call it? I'm drawing a blank.
The second one, the second...
It's just, it's the first here where it...
I'll get my...
I'll, I'll, it's just a, anyways, just to look at our options, bring somebody in, help us talk about what the options are, and see what direction we want to go, because no one's ready to step into the exploratory study, is what I was trying to say.
That's it, yeah.
It's a $5,000 exploratory grant study.
I'm sorry, I thought that we had decided at the meeting that we were going to go on ahead and do our own studies before taking on the $5,000 study.
No, that was before we take on the other, the main study, that we didn't even talk about the exploratory, I don't believe that, or not, where, that sort of came up more afterward.
I'm in agreement, I thought we decided to study a side-by-side.
I mean, that requires the study committee, and no one seemed ready to commit to the $20,000 study committee. I mean, if there's a side-by-side, it requires more than one study committee.
Right.
And...
These are different discussions.
I don't think the boards were ready to step into that kind of commitment. Marlboro spoke very clearly about, you know, not being sure, they're doing a lot of work in their town.
They're meeting tonight.
And they're trying to figure out what direction they want to know, go. I know Wyndham's got a meeting coming up to discuss with their community what direction they'd like to go. I know Jamaica's held one, I know Wardsborough's held one, Dover's held quite a number of community meetings about what direction, how they want to approach Act 46. Eventually, I think, all of that will feed into a conversation at Wyndham Central, and a decision will get made. I think the fact is that after the Wyndham Central Board made the decision at our last meeting, the retreat, that we weren't going to move forward with the accelerated model, then it took a little pressure off, because most of the, most of the resources right now on these studies are going into the people who are looking into the accelerated, and after March, when most of those have to have their votes by, that'll change, things will change.
Then we read that Rockingham, Bellas Falls are combining already, and Twin Valley, and, you know, it's...
They're in the, they're in the process.
I know they're talking, I know they're talking, but I'm stuck.
I think we are too.
Please raise it at the November 18th meeting, that's exactly what we have to have, is the WCSU board decide, now, here as a board, I think you're only, I don't want to be too directive with you, but you don't have a lot of ways to go with Leland and Gray Union School District.
I thought you were going to say weight, I don't have any weight.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, as a board, you can discuss it or not, but your obvious position is to pursue a pre-K through 12 district.
Right, right. Like the RED committee, I looked that up this morning, it was all done.
The public can look at that again.
On the RED committee.
Well, there are things that could be looked at again, and certainly... Well, there are things that could be looked at again, and certainly the projections on money need to be reconsidered and all that.
The basic groundwork.
But that would, from Leland Gray's point of view, I'd suggest that's, that's the way to go. The question is whether other school districts, that is, town sending towns in the union, their boards are, are willing to have the same commitment. And I don't know about that.
And Dorin's letter was wonderful.
Wardsboro's meeting did result in eliminating two things. Wardsboro does not want to join the Leland Gray Union School District, and Wardsboro does not want to close its public school.
That's a big loss.
And neither of those things are required under Act 46.
Right. They just eliminated what options they could have. Because any of these small towns...
They don't want to give up choice.
Those are still, that's right. They don't want to give up choice.
Yeah, they don't have to.
They don't have to. So, they're, they're much like, they're much more likely to move towards Dover and consider a study of a K-6 unit, pre-K-6 unit.
If I could just say quick something about this law. I think what's really important, it seems to be getting lost, maybe in the tension around timing and all that, when all this is going on, and especially because the accelerated things are happening, and votes are being taken place, and you get, there's a lot of questions and comments, and a lot of misinformation out there. But, but what I think is really important is that the intent of this law was to, to have communities, school boards, parents, students engage in a conversation about what they really believe is necessary to meet the needs of their kids and their taxpayers.
Tony, I've been at the WCSU meetings now for several months, and that's been the topic.
But I'm talking about engaging your community in a conversation around this. And so, that is required under this law. And I, that's going to take place in every community, I believe. And if they, if, if a community, even if they don't want to do anything, any change, they're probably going to engage in that conversation in their community. And that's a critically important piece.
I sent out a list to all Brookline residents that this was critical, that they come and see how Act 46. And one Brookline resident came to talk about the budget, which was fair, and she had a right to do that, but...
Nobody said it was going to be easy.
No.
I'll be the first one to say that it is, it is not only a challenging undertaking, it's going to take a lot of commitment and time on both the school boards and on community members. But do I believe it's the right thing to do for our kids? You're darn right.
Oh, me too.
So, it means we have to work real hard. And I, and I don't, I wouldn't accept the fact that people didn't come to one meeting. I would continue to go out there and knock on doors.
Of course.
And I think that we'll all do that. It's our responsibility to make sure that we're doing what's right for kids.
I would just like to say one very quick thing, and then I'll shut up. Dorin made a wonderful speech at that meeting, as you know, about our community and the equity of education for every student, no matter what their background, where they're coming from. She got applause, the only applause. So, I just wanted to say that for a minute. I was very proud of her.
I just have a quick thing I had mentioned to Steven. The high school I went to was part of a regional school district in New Hampshire. Governor Wentworth, Regional School District. And we ruled towns with elementary schools and then a high school. And there was one school board, and it was a very prestigious position to hold. People were written up in the paper, they advertised, they, you know, they ran. You really ran. It was bankers, and doctors, and lawyers, and things. And so, I, and, and they would make a 20-year plan about, okay, five years from now, Effingham School is going to need this, 10 years from now, Tuftonboro School is going to need this. And I went to the website, and I tried to wheedle my way in, and I couldn't get into any of the, the meeting minutes, because you had to sign in. But I was able to come up with their technology. They, they had a, like a five-year or more technology thing online. And it has a whole budget for what, and it's all written up, how they're going to do the technology budget narrative for 2014, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17. And they're able to do that, and boom, for all the schools. And that's, and they, they do a lot of committee work. It's all committee work. They come to their meetings, and they discuss, I did, I think I did, I printed off an agenda, so I was able to get to that. And each committee gives a report at every meeting, and that's where the real work comes. And there's teachers on the committees, and there's community members on the committees, and there's board members on the committees. And that's where the work gets done, and then it's all presented at the board, and there's discussion. And, but they get the work done, and they work on long-term plans and goals. So, and you can do that when you have, when you don't have five million boards. Try, just trying to, like, sitting here and saying, "Oh, well, what, what did they think?" Or what, you know, it just, it's really not efficient. It's not an efficient way to do it. So, that's just our board.
Thank you. There's one correction. In the WCSU, we only have 13 boards.
Oh, I know. It feels like a million sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah.
You don't have to tell me.
Yeah, especially when you go to all the meetings.
Can I ask Chairman, what's the confirmed board representation on that November 18th meeting?
It, it should be the three voting members, unless one of us is not there. I'll be there. Bruce?
All right.
We will be there.
It's November 18th, 7 o'clock here. That's November 18th, 7 o'clock here, as it says on the agenda, coming up in the meetings. And that's public meeting, folks out there on the video, so...
Welcome. Yeah. So, does, does the board, yeah, good question. Does the board actually want to give the voting members any direction for that night?
Yeah. I move that we direct our members to vote to preserve our school board at Leland and Gray at all costs.
Yeah, we need a second?
Nobody would like to, nobody feels that, that we, as a school board, are valuable enough to preserve ourselves as an entity?
I guess, I, I hate to say yes in that, that way, but there's not a second.
Can I put another motion out there, then?
Certainly.
I move that we close Leland and Gray and tuition our kids out to the nearest, larger schools. In other words, kids in New Fane can go to Brattleboro, the kids in Wyndham could go to Green Mountain, the kids in Jamaica could go to Burn Burton. Because if we don't maintain our school board, we may as well just close up our school. We are the smallest school in the region. And giving up our jurisdiction over this school is signing a death warrant for our school. And it may be three years, or it may be five years, or it may be eight years. But if we give up our responsibility to this school, this school will not exist. So, you may as well, we may as well just vote now to close it.
So, your motion is to close the...
Yeah, how much of that was your motion, and how much of it was just editorial?
My motion is, yeah, to close the school and tuition our kids out, or our kids' school choice.
Okay. Is there a second? All right.
So, I think we've accomplished two things by those motions. Thank you very much, Howard.
We don't want to go for the extreme on either end. Sure.
I want to make a comment.
Okay.
So, today I was lucky enough to be a part of a panel giving feedback to a firm hired by the legislature or, or Agency of Education called Picas and Aden, doing a finance study for the state for determining what block grants to schools would look like based on a number of factors. And so, being in, meeting in southeastern Vermont, there was a wide range of people in attendance, including a board member from Twin Valley, who asked if their board can meet with our board about creating a side-by-side reunion.
Who was it?
With Leland and Gray or with the supervisor?
Bill Taylor.
Yes.
He didn't speak to that on Friday night, when the meeting happened in Wilmington, so that's a new development. I don't know that they've had a meeting.
It's just one board member gave me his contact information, and I told him about this letter that I had sent to you.
By the way, this letter that we're referring to is posted online. And if you can't find it in the public, they're on, on our website.
Oh, so the public has access to this letter.
It's part of the report from...
It's a very wonderful letter.
Thank you, Dorin.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I want everybody in Jamaica to read this letter.
Actually, I was going to ask you if you wanted to speak about it briefly.
Before you open your tur, can I just say? The, the letter went from Wyndham Central. I think, I think maybe you sent it, or Rich sent it.
I sent it to the, to all the surrounding superintendents, you know.
Right. And the board chairs as well, asking for them to reach out and have a conversation with us. And, and there was a little response, but in fact, Twin Valley, not Twin Valley, but Wyndham Southwest, did indicate interest in having a conversation with us, but the timing wasn't right, and so maybe that will continue.
Yeah.
So, it's not like we didn't ask, we, we actually have reached out to other WCSUs, where they really actually haven't reached out to us, so I think it's important to know that.
Marburg, Wardsboro, and Dover attended the meeting in Wilmington. And members of the board attended the meeting in Wilmington and spoke.
But, but I'm talking about specifically, our reaching, us reaching out under Act 46 to other resiliency.
I wouldn't want this to get lost in the shuffle, though. Is there some need for...
We'll follow, I'll follow up. I mean, we'll follow up with Chris Pratt. That Supervisor Union is pretty, is pretty determined to go, and has everybody voted, boards all voted, to pursue a side-by-side study. So, they're combining three districts, K through 8. Well, they're, we haven't gotten there yet.
No, I know.
K through 8 with three towns, Stanford, Greensboro, and Halifax. And then, with another side-by-side being the K through 12 district combining Whitingham and Wilmington, which are already in a joint contract relationship, managing those two schools, the elementary school and the middle school, high school. And they'll, you know, then they'll go to what's really called the Union School District of those two towns. That's what's predicted to happen right now.
They, it could be expanded. Marburg could join the K through 8. Everybody else could come in the, you know, in the K-6.
Well, there are lots of, there are lots of, there's nothing sacred about the WS, the SU boundaries right now. Keep that in mind, nor the school district boundaries.
Right. It could, it would be, you know, a very large district. So, yeah, do you want to briefly speak to this? I mean, I think everybody had, I, I hope everybody had a chance to read it and think about it. And I certainly, you know, don't want to go through the whole six pages, or nine pages.
Maybe I tell you a little bit about the heart that went into this letter, rather than the specifics, like the number crunching that is represented here. And that heart was when Steven informed me that there were visitors to the Jamaica Board meeting, and I followed up with a phone call, and then another call with Laura Hazard, to find out more of what had happened with two different, one private, one public schools looking to ask, to have their, the children of Jamaica go to a different school, and that they closed their own school. And that when it was asked at the Jamaica Board meeting, what would happen to the students with special needs if they were to join the Mountain School, the question wasn't answered. And as what I know to be the case, they don't accept those students. So, would they then go to Townsend, or Wyndham, or, and it would really make a demographic shift and a different experience of those schools, because we're not talking about a small number. And it certainly made me think about our Jamaica students, and I list the number of them that we have at our school, and how much we provide for them and all of our students. And thought a lot about, in the abstract, of what has happened across the country around resegregation, especially not, especially socio-economically over the last 20 years, and what would it mean for Leland and Gray? When I first started teaching, our, I was in a school that, this is before Act 60, so it suffered from very low funding, because there was no industry in that community. And the year that I left the school, one-third of the staff left at the same time. And I had been there three years, and we had had four principals during that time. There were virtually no after-school programs. And actually, Barbara's still here. I, when her husband found out that I had taught there, he told me about the day that Leland and Gray took a bus over there to play a sports game against that school's team. And they, it appeared to be that no fans were present, and the, and the players were just waiting to get it over, so they would lose yet again. And I contrast that with what I had described at our WCSU Superboard meeting, with this incredible fan base and enthusiasm for all of our kids, not looking at what town they're from, what their family income, what their family makeup is like, but instead, that we're all there as Leland and Gray with this mission, that we educate all the children of our union towns, plus these, like, eight other towns that happen to be sending their children to us. And the thought of our low-income students, and our students with mental health needs, and our special needs students surrounded by kids who are mirrors of themselves, instead of the 60 to 70% of our current student population, who, who get accepted to college every year. So, I, it would be a completely different demographic, which would so further reduce the aspirations of our disadvantaged students. And, I mean, it was, it brought me to tears every time I thought about it. And I felt that there was conversations happening about our wonderful pre-K through 6 kids, or maybe pre-K through 8, when they're, I want to say they're cute and uncomplicated, but they're not uncomplicated, actually. The, you know, times have changed a lot. And then, this assumption that, well, a parent can just decide where they're going to go next after, once they're starting 7th grade. And me knowing that the research out there shows that it means that they're pulled apart further, that the, that the fam, that the families with more means will send their children to more affluent schools, and that families with less means, their, this children will go to what is easiest to get to, number one, because there's no transportation allotment included with Act 46 with any kind of, I mean, that would be a local decision. But certainly, the stratification that results is that. And then, looking at these two Vermont studies that I quote in here, where, if you look on page 4 of my letter, where it is a direct causation, some correlation of what happened in rural Rutland County, just, just because they opened up public school choice. They didn't offer more transportation, but they just did what the law allowed. They had their own little regional school choice, and how much it increased the stratification, stratification between the haves and have-nots, all in, in the direction that is, I would say, inherently undemocratic and further disadvantaging children who are unfortunate enough to be born in disadvantageous circumstances. And in turn, and really going through, so what would this mean for us? It was an internalization that was so painful and unnecessary, because if you look on page 2, 3, rather, and you see how Leland and Gray's kneecap scores, the most recent scores we have available, compare, if you pull it apart and say, so how are middle-income kids doing, and how are lower-income kids doing, on nearly, in nearly every area, in, compared to all four acad, um, town academies, our scores are better. But because our percentage of low-income students is higher, it gets mixed together, and that's where we're penalized by no child behind, left behind. And that's what makes headlines in the Reformer and other publications, or GreatSchools.com, or the other websites. And, and then, I don't even really get this data. I had to go digging for it in the archives at the Agency of Education to see this, and to be able to show that if you attend Leland and Gray, whether you're middle-income or low-income, you're going to do, you have a better chance of, of achieving the standard than at Burn Burton. So, I think that this information needs to get out, be known, and also for us to consider as a union school system, a pre-K through 12 system, what's our covenant with the public and our children? What do we want to become? Have towns and have-not towns, don't go in that town. And that is happening all over the country. So, those are the major things that I wanted to point out. But then, okay, we're loaded with all this information. Where do we go next? So, I make some suggestions about, about becoming a... So I make some suggestions about, about becoming a small union of six hundred and forty students, inviting our union towns. And I would like to think that they would be compelled by the, by the, the, the commons, the greater good. And, or, or I should say, and, another possibility is to align with a like system, like Green Mountain Union or Twin Valley Union. And then, so what could be some initial steps? Talking about, certainly with our elementary boards about this, what the, our public school does and for them to understand this data. So I really would like them all to have a copy of that letter and find out for them, and, and I have, I have all in printout form so they can see that as well, or they can conduct the research themselves. And then I'd love to open a, have a open house as soon as possible and invite all the towns' board members as well as our local representatives, where students talk and staff talk. We had a very little version of this a month or so ago, and Emily, you were there and a few other people were there, where students just put their heart out of what after-school, and they were just talking about the after-school program. They didn't even talk about what they were doing during the school day and how much that changed their lives because of what Leland and Gray did for them. That doesn't happen in a big school. Fifty percent of our students participate in athletics. Think about that. I, that can only happen in a school our size, that we have almost as, you know, a comparable number of athletic programs as you would in a high school of eight hundred or a thousand because of the participation levels. Do they have more than three plays a year at Brattleboro? Maybe one of you know, but I haven't seen another high school that has, when I was at Harwood, they had over a thousand students. They had three productions a year. We got three hundred and fifty students, we also have three productions a year. So we, I mean, yes, it's expensive, but the enrichment that comes with that and more likely to get into college, all of those things that we wanna see students have in their high school resume, they bring with them when they apply. The letter we got from UVM at the last board meeting where they commended us about their high scores, the number of AP scores that they took, the number of AP options they have at our school, it's remarkable. And we're doing it because of this covenant to those kids. And if I look at the diversity, and I do look at this, what's the socioeconomic makeup of our students in those classes? And I report on it to the board because it's something that matters to us, that we pay attention to, and it matters to our teachers. So there's some other suggestions here about bringing in some experts who have been there. The author of the study in Rutland County is Bill Mathis, and he's on the State Board of Education. And maybe he would come and give a talk and explain to everyone what did happen in their county at that time. And I've started a conversation with Bud Myers, who was studying in, in Hartford, Vermont. And I just found out that the biggest competition for Windsor High School is Hanover High School. That, and, that, that anyone with means, they figure out the transportation, they get their kids over to Hanover. And how, and now the discussion is, are they gonna close Windsor High School? So, 'cause they don't have the population to sustain it. And there's some more suggestions here that I'd be happy to speak to.
I think you can hear the passion in Durin's voice, and we speak of this often. And for me to understand it as to where we are in this point of history, I've said repeatedly to Durin that I believe this is the great civil rights issue of our time. There's so much to be lost here for our kids, for the poor, I know, you know, and the challenge, those kids who are, who have the learning challenges. I have to tell you, seeing her data was so refreshing and exciting to see really how our struggling kids do. And that they, they get to be around their peers, their, the, the community we talked about that we're responsible for, not only to feed, but to, to grow educationally as well. Thank you for all your hard work.
Well, I just also wanna mention what a benefit it is for our advantaged students. They're not just hanging around, you know, raising all, you know, the tide for all boats. When Kayla, a, what was she, a ninth grade, eighth grade? She presented about being a pure tutor. She never considered herself a very good math student, but her seventh-grade math teacher asked her to come back to her room after school and tutor other students. She learned so much math tutoring other students that now she wants to go into banking or finance or something like that. Where, and she had never even considered herself a math person until she started tutoring, where she was learning all this new material and she was getting better at math in her own grade level. So it's, it's not like that, you know, that only one half of the equation is getting some maybe kinda unfair benefit at, you know, and that's sort of a stereotype, that it's gonna be at the expense of the, of the more affluent students. It's not, it's to the advantage of the more affluent students.
I'd like to just put this in context, I think we missed the introduction. The reason why Durin spoke to this issue and gave us such an impassioned letter and presentation is because at the Jamaica Board meeting, school district board meeting, there was sentiment by the public express to close Jamaica School and to withdraw from the supervised, the SU, that's right, the Leland and Gray Union School District. And of course, it was pointed out that all the other towns would have to agree to let them out. But that is really the impetus for this, this proactive response in terms of research. And there are people who present other statistics about how advantageous it is to go to Burton-Burton or some other private academy. We know from the state demographics of the map and cost per student that the highest costs per pupil are around those four schools listed there, average per pupil cost. I do think that the public needs to reflect on the commitment to public education and whether public education is going to be truly inclusive and funded in a way that is going to make it equitable and accessible excellence for all students, or whether we will continue to figure out ways where people can be supported to send their kids to private schools. That's my strong political opinion. I do believe that there are three things that we ought not to do by private enterprise. One of them is defense. The other one is medical care. And the third one is education. I'm debating about telecommunications and utilities. But the other three, I'm pretty convinced, there have never been any examples of those three being more efficiently affected by everybody for themselves in a free enterprise environment. A monopoly serves those three very well. But it takes public will to do it.
Right. Yes, please.
Real, real briefly, I wanna say two things. One is that, thank you for your passion about all this, and, and I really appreciate it. The fact is, our enrollment continues to decline at Leland and Gray, and it's something that we have to deal with. I think our enrollment is fairly stable at the moment in the elementary schools, but not going up by any means. So, so there has to be some kind of conversation around our future because we can't, we can no longer sustain all these wonderful programs that you're talking about. And we, we know this, I mean, it's a given. So I think we, we need to have that conversation and as a community, as a Leland and Gray community, and as our individual communities, getting together in some way to find a way to meet the needs of every one of those children because that worries me as well. It is, the biggest concern I have is around equity of opportunity for our kids and at a cost that taxpayers can afford. And so we need to go do that. I just wanna quickly make a statement, share a statement that I received from Oliver Olson, who would have, I think, would have loved to have been here tonight to engage in this conversation with us. But he's in California on work job. But he did let me know that he took a little issue with one of the statements in here, and I think I've mentioned to you, Durin, ahead of time, you, you weren't at the meeting, so Stephen or I think maybe Bruce was at the meeting in Jamaica. But he felt it was a little misrepresented that, that the Mountain School came in and formally requested that the Jamaica Village School Board close its public school and tuition their students. He felt that that wasn't what they did.
That's true.
What, what they actually did was go in and just present their school as an option if something happened and where a community wanted to do it. I know you weren't there, so you were just repeating what you had heard. But, but he, he felt pretty strongly that that wasn't a fair representation of what the Mountain School's role was at that meeting. So I, I'll just leave it, I wasn't there, I'll just leave it to the people that are there.
I can speak to it directly. Yes, there are two members from the Mountain School Board. They welcomed and assured the board that they had room for sixty more students if Jamaica closed its school. That's the way they put it. They didn't formally request that this, they're not members of the town. I don't think they're either residents of the town. But there were people at, at the town who spoke on both sides of that issue. And there were also parents who spoke in favor of staying with the Leland and Gray Union School District as well. I think that Jamaica is the most obviously and heavily divided town over the issue of choice. And it's because of their geography.
In Leland and Gray.
And, and particularly Leland and Gray. Wyndham is consistently and tremendously loyal to Leland and Gray. I do believe that one of the suggestions Durin makes here in terms of moving forward, the resistance that I know the board of Wyndham, and I think Howard shares this, is that if you get into a bigger board, they'll close you down because you're small. And that's the fear that is in the, you know, the biggest thing that our, our communities have to consider, contemplate, and determine how, where they stand.
Are there any of these things that we as a board can do? Some of them seem very feasible to me.
Well, I think we ought not to delay it tonight. I think we ought to sit on this and reflect.
But I don't wanna let it go. I don't wanna just let this die.
The first thing to do is on November eighteenth, when the WCSU Board meets, is see if you can get people to vote for a study. And if they're not ready, you can't force it.
No, and I'm not talking about that. Durin's directly addressing Leland and Gray Board, so maybe at December first or December eighth. I don't wanna let this just fade away.
I recognize what you're trying to do, Lyndal, but, but there is a requirement that, that there, there is a legal role that Leland and Gray, that you're trying to have Leland and Gray have, but we don't have. So we, we don't get represented on that study committee unless we are appointed individually.
I'm not even talking about the study committee.
So, so we couldn't make those recommendations.
I understand that.
We can go to that, and we should have our voice heard. And I hope that the, from the three towns that can have someone on a study committee, if there is a study committee formed, I hope that there will be Leland and Gray Board members who ask to be appointed.
I totally understand that, Emily. I'm talking very specifically about the things here, the open house for, for elementary schools within our Leland and Gray district, that kind of thing.
She's already got a date for that, I think.
I'm, I'm not, I, I understand, we're, we're underneath the supervisory union board, and we're represented by people who voice our concerns.
So Durin will report which of these things we're gonna pursue and which are scheduled. I mean, because these are, the, the list of numbers there, some of them, some of them she can do and some of them can't.
Some can, some can't.
You know, you can go to the list and kind of ask yourself whether this is possible or not. I can guarantee that all of them that are possible are probably gonna happen.
Okay, but she, she's suggesting stuff for the Leland and Gray Board, and I'm just saying, let, let us, what can we do? I, I ask very straightforwardly, what can we do? You tell me if we can't do anything or we can do something. That's all I'm asking.
We need to get engaged in the conversation.
Well, the first one is to talk with your elementary boards. I mean, you know, go back and talk to the New Brook Board, the Brookline piece of the New Brook Board about what they need to do. Get those representatives to come to the Wyndham Central meeting and, you know, enter into a study. Well, but, like, that's something specifically Lyndal can do. I mean, you know, I'm talking to my.
And it wasn't happening between the two of them.
I'm talking to the people in the Townsend Board, definitely, so, you know.
No, this is helpful, too.
And number two is gonna happen, right?
Well, I would, I, I would like the, the approval of, of our board before I would go ahead with number two. I don't, I don't have a date. I'm, but, because you would all, first of all, you'd all be invited and you'd be like featured guests, you know, or you could part of the, how, and, and if there was a couple of board members who would like to work with me to plan this, as you would see from a, because of a board member's perspective, how it would go the best. So I, I, I couldn't, I don't feel like I could do this without your approval and perhaps at least one person helping in the, in just the planning and the, like, there's a letter of invitation. I don't want it to just come from me. It would, I think it would be more appropriate to come from a board member.
Right. I don't think tonight's the night to debate.
Yeah, I don't know if necessarily tonight is the night to figure that out. I also think we'd run into a real short, real short calendar with trying to get it done by December eleventh.
I'll make it happen. I mean, I'm feeling, you know, once January starts and the legislators are all busy and everyone's busy with the, I feel, I, I wouldn't have written this letter if I didn't feel the urgency.
I, I think some of the other member boards in Wyndham Central are not feeling the urgency now that we've definitely taken the preferred district off the table. And a lot of people are waiting to find out what's gonna happen at their town meetings and kind of feel out their towns a little more and do some specific regional things. I'm not sure, you know, if we hold an open house to showcase Leland and Gray, we're then advocating for the, the pre-K twelve red conglomeration on our own. And I, you know, right now, I don't even know if anybody's willing to study that. So it may not, it may not get a lot of attendance, it may not, it may not work. And I'm not sure we can put it together by December eleventh.
Right, at budget time.
You know, everybody's doing their budgets, everybody's doing everything else. And, and we have time. I mean, there is some urgency there, I, I get that, but we have, you know, we're, nothing's gonna happen for another year and a half now because we're not gonna go for the preferred model. No, no, no action is going to have to be taken.
No, I know that, but we need to have.
We are, we, we will be planning.
We will do it, but we don't have to do it in the next four weeks.
I think it's three minutes with the same PowerPoint presentation.
Patty, do you feel that the residents in Jamaica know Leland and Gray? Do they know what's going on here, what we're doing for their kids?
I think there, there are a large number of, of residents who know Leland and Gray. It's, it's not necessarily people who have kids in school right now. It's some of the older people who their kids went to Leland and Gray, they went to Leland and Gray. I think there's, I think there's going to be quite a battle. I don't think it's gonna be a slam dunk in Jamaica for closing our school. And, I mean, I just sense that that would be a, a big discussion. And especially when you start talking about the potential negative tax implications that can happen when you open up your school, your town like that, and the fact that our, our tax money could be going to enrich a different community, not yet impacting us at all positively and going off somewhere else. I, I think there will be, it's not gonna be a slam dunk.
Part of the study. You have to look at the facts.
Yeah, it's, but it's, it does require getting the community engaged and letting people know. But I think that's at the Jamaica level, is letting the community know that there is talk and there are things brewing about trying to close our Jamaica School and voucher out our kids. And I think if, if more people understood the serious talk that's happening at the Jamaica level, that, then it would become a bigger thing. I don't know that many people really know how, how that's going.
So Patty brings up a point if I could.
Sure.
I, I think what's really important is we remember the findings in the law and the goals of the law. And the fact is that if we start this with solutions, we're doing it a disservice to our kids. This is supposed to be about our children and our communities and children first. And so I hope that, you know, we'll, we won't panic, that we'll get into conversations. We get to decide as communities about what we believe is right. I, I have heard of all kinds of, I mean, I think even some ways, closing Jamaica School as an option is a solution to something. I'm not sure what, but I, but I think that, that it's not the right way to start this, to engage in this conversation. I hope that we'll say, what do we want our kids to know? How do we want them to get there? What do they need to leave here to be career and college-ready? I just, I think that the conversation has to be shifted around, and we need to take that forward with our communities.
That's a wonderful approach, provided that all parties approach it with the same attitude. You have somebody like Representative Olson, who is very determined, very articulate, very driven on this one issue of privatizing and, and of voucher schools. Do you know of anyone who is equally articulate and engaged in Jamaica?
I, I don't know. I could, I bet I could find some people who would talk. I know at a town meeting two years ago, he, Oliver was up on the stage, and I'm not sure what position he was in because he wasn't the representative anymore, and, and it came up. And Jen Connor was all over him. She just, there were a few of us who really just said, no, that's not at all what, most of the town meeting was not excited about that idea at all, but, um.
See, that's what I mean, you don't start with a solution.
Right, right.
And if there's a solution being presented to us, we should reject that as communities. And we should move forward with the other going from the correct direction.
Right. With describing what are, what's our situation, defining our situation, what problems we have to solve. have to solve, and then finding the, the opportunities to solve them. Yeah.
I'm feeling that there, that the Act 46 has emboldened-
Yes.
-the, uh, school choice advocates. Now, they may feel that Act 46 has emboldened the, uh, the anti-school choice advocates. So, they're, so, I, I mean, clearly, I'm coming from a particular perspective of the, that, a public democracy, democratic covenant with our communities, with our, with our children. There's a reason why I put a lot of evidence in here, so it wasn't about my personal opinion, but the facts of what will happen to our kids if they go to a voucher system. And I don't want to say especially Jamaica, but it is particular to Jamaica because of the demographics, not just because of your geography being, it, close to the towns that have school choice, but because it has the highest percentage of free reduced meals of any school in our Supervisory Union.
We have a ton of kids who cannot eat unless they go to school.
They have, they have the highest percentage-
So many kids.
-of, of participation in their after-school program.
Yeah.
Ninety, ninety-five percent of their children, no other school comes close to that because the needs are so big.
Yeah, we're so close to, um, the town of Stratton and the town of Wind Hall, and a lot of people who live in Jamaica work up at Stratton, so they, they see this, this thing where people can pick and choose where they go to school because it's right next door to them even sometimes in some areas, but, and they think they want that, they think that's, and it's always been like that in Jamaica. There's always been a contingent of, um, of elementary school parents who have wanted to have school choice and wanted to be able to say, oh, we, and, and there are some who just make it happen. They pay the tuition, they suck it up, or they, they keep their house in Jamaica and buy another house in Londonderry. I know a couple families who did that, and they rent out their house in Jamaica, and they buy a second home in Londonderry, so, and live in Londonderry.
If it's premature for us to have an open house because you feel like we have lots and lots of time, even though I, I can't say I am sharing that opinion, I would offer that perhaps, uh, maybe it'd be Gerald and Julian and Melanie and me and some others to actually go to the boards of our union towns and present and say, we want to share with you what Leland and Gray has been up to, and we can, so, all that data that you guys get every spring and summer about the participation rates and our after-school programs and the, the, the range of things, of opportunities that we offer, the college acceptance rates and, and then the information about what I share here about, um, the detrimental effects of stratification of students by a choice system, I would be very happy to do that because I, I, Leland and Gray can't be that C when we have the most students of any of the schools in RSU not to have a voice at the table. I'm really concerned that secondary school students are getting the shaft in this conversation. They have enormous needs, pregnancy, drug abuse, drug, mental illness. They have the, you know, they are at the greatest risks. Howie, you talked about public transportation. There was a student who was getting a ride on public transportation system a couple of years back and was propositioned by the driver. That was hours and hours and hours of work for our school, for that kid who was so needy, and all the setback that that did for that kid. And so I'm not saying I'm opposing any kind of thing because I know Boston, New York City all the time, I don't know how they set that up to keep those kids safe. But these are the, but, but when I'm talking about kid, secondary school kids having no voice, who would think of doing that for kids in kindergarten, first grade, that they just go on a public bus?
Well, no. All right. Can I suggest that if you're going to put a presentation together for the school boards, that we also put a presentation together for Town Meeting Day? I know there are a lot of organizations that do sort of traveling presentations, the ambulance service, various, you know, organizations come around to our town meeting every year and do a little presentation. Maybe we should have a little packet for Leland and Gray to show the member towns what we have to offer.
I certainly think having that data available would be useful. And it's really useful as, as, you know, when a study starts happening at the, at the larger level like it needs to, you know, having that data then and even making that presentation then to the study committee as one of the reasons why you do want to consider the, the pre-K 12 district, because there are all these advantages here, would be very useful, you know.
I also think this is a conversation that needs to continue at this board level, you know, because this is a, this is a process. This isn't a sudden thing, this is going to take time, and we need to stay on top of it as a board.
I agree.
Perhaps at your next meeting, there'll be more members of the public interested in speaking to the issue. I think there are, there's plenty of evidence that the videotaping of these meetings is, is reaching people. And so, let's, let's look forward to that conversation continuing, and I, I also hope that, well, I think your three representatives have heard quite a bit about what they think they should do at the board meeting, and knows that you can attend that board meeting, that WCSU Board meeting on the 18th, so certainly come.
We'll have a voice.
To influence that discussion.
Exactly.
And you'll have a certainly equal book, voice. I'd suggest unless there's more discussion on this, that we try to move on in view of the hour.
I was just going to say that, but you are talking.
Yeah, sorry.
Did I put them in this place? Yeah, if we, if we are done with that section of the meeting, we do have a little piece about the solar energy. Does anybody else want to speak about Act 46?
No. Can I just ask, so, with your permission, can I present at our union boards, the union school boards, as well as at town meeting?
Move to, uh-
Yeah.
-encourage you to do that.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'm not going to do it if you guys are like, we don't know what that principle is.
Yes, please.
Crazy woman, what they're talking about teenagers.
We have your support.
Yeah, all your-
She's just asking for a sense of the board. She has a sense of the board. You don't need to make a motion because it's not you telling her to go to all these board meetings. I mean, that's up to her to decide how to proceed.
Right.
Right?
Exactly.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right.
And I think one of us should try to be at the meeting that you're going to, in our town.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you're going to go meet, you should probably let the board know when you-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let us know.
We'll do all the official channels, yes, and, and definitely from, you know, just speaking to, you know, New Fame everywhere to do it together, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so we need to approve a solar consortium net metering agreement? You, you guys have signed a tentative agreement based on the office reviewing-
I signed on behalf of the-
-the, the presentation, and, um, we actually need a motion to authorize you to sign that going forward?
Yeah, just to approve my commitment on the part of the board.
Bud, do you want to explain this real briefly so that we can make an informed decision?
There was a, a group of supervisory unions earlier in the year got together, hired a group called Competitive Energy Services as the consultant. When they initially announced their consortium, their expectation was to have a, a 20% discount on net metering, which since you only book for 80% of your electricity use, would bring you down to 18%. And then Competitive Energy Services had a fee in addition to that. So, as initially presented, it was not competitive with some of the other opportunities around. And I want to thank Emily for bringing it back to our attention because once Competitive Energy Services completed their bidding process, they ended up not with a 20% of net metering discount, which is, has been the industry average around the state, but a, a 32% discount. Now, when you take the, when you apply that 80% to the, to the 32% and take the Competitive Energy Services fee out of there, you end up with a 22% discount, which is higher than just about anything that's out there. So, it was, again, thank you, Emily, for bringing that back to our attention because I know I myself was operating on old data. And so we've, we very quickly, because there was a, I don't want to say arbitrary, but deadline, but there was a deadline imposed, so Stephen and I did a little, little hustling, and I think we've got just about everybody in the SU, I think we have everybody.
All, yeah, all six districts that have buildings that aren't doing their own solar installation have, if they want to put on their property, have, have committed to proceed with this agreement because this is the best deal that we'll, we, we can get, and the deals will soon close off because they all have to be installed and running by December of 2016. We don't know where this solar panels will be. They'll be someplace in the state and will be hooked up with a net metering, and you will be able to trade this or sell this if, God forbid, the school closed or whatever. These buildings, the actual net metering benefit is transferable to whatever entity takes over, whether it's the same building or a different building or a new building. That's part of the beauty of this law in, in Vermont. It's unique to Vermont.
It's a very artful, um, process, very artful statute. It's, it's, things are really popping in Vermont, and they're kind of limping along in the, in the rest of the country.
The only other thing I'll point out is for the public's interest in New Brook, the company that's installing the solar panels there is exactly the same company, Sun Edison, that won the bid statewide consortium. Either way, you would have been dealing with the same actual production, but New Brook's deal is not so advantageous because they're paying New Brook a lot of lease, annual lease of twenty-
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand dollars to New Brook to have this solar installation on their property.
Okay, so you, we need a motion then to-
Please.
-approve the entering into this agreement by you?
The, yeah, and you can name it. It's the, it's the Vermont, it's actually the PV Solar Consortium of Vermont Schools.
Okay.
Make a motion that we enter into agreement with the PV Consortium-
Solar Consortium of Vermont Schools.
Solar Consortium of Vermont Schools to participate in their program.
Net metering agreement.
Net metering agreement.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Howie seconded it. And it's, and it's in the agenda, the exact wording.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. It was easy decision, but it's a scramble to get it pulled off, especially once again for all six districts independently and having to fill out this stuff.
Which negotiations, counsel, are you talking about?
I'm talking about forbearning with the master agreement and the union. We haven't received a letter yet, but I anticipate one, and if, if we want to proceed to know the setup and begin negotiations, I should know who, at least from Leland and Gray, will be representing on that council.
Okay.
If you can't recall, you were it, Joe.
Does that have to be decided?
I, I was it last time, I know, and actually, I'm signed up for training on this coming Saturday for six and a half hours on how to negotiate effectively from the VSA.
I was.
I'm sorry, was it six schools or six districts or what?
Well, it's six school dis, it's six schools, yeah, it's six school districts and school buildings. They're, each, each of the school districts that have signed up have their own building, including Leland and Gray.
Can I, can I make a motion to have the two of you on? Will you do it again?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joe and Patty to the negotiations council.
It's as easy as it was last time.
Nope, no barriers on that. So, quick, somebody second it.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. It's been moved and seconded to appoint me and Patty to the negotiations committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, we've done the new budget, we've done the budget. The, the policy committee met. What do we need to do with the drugs and alcohol policy?
The warrant also.
Let me, let me read what we did and then-
Okay. We revise, a new one or?
No.
We, we got together and we re, want to recommend to the board that we reviewed FO7, and we just want to continue that, but there's one line that was crossed out, which was old information. So, we, I don't think we need to-
I'll just read it to the public when it was striking. The committee's recommending that they strike from the F7, which is alcohol and drugs, uh, student use of alcohol and drugs. And it was approved by the board, adopted previously on, it's a model policy, was adopted June 10th of 2014. Now, the reason it came up for review is because there's some concern about the administrative procedures that go to implement this and how they need to be revised and updated. So, Durin wanted to make sure that the committee was supportive of that, which I believe they are, but the board doesn't need to vote on that. But this line that's being stricken says, "The Wyndham Central Supervisory Union, under a cooperative agreement with Youth Services of Brattleboro, has established a student assistance program." That was certainly true at one time. We have had a contract to provide a student's assistance counselor program here at Leland and Gray, but we no longer, you know, we should leave out the specificity of that being an arrangement with Youth Services, although it's a fine organization. In fact, we are employing our own employee at this point without a contract with Youth Services. So, that's, you can approve that, right, Melanie? That's-
So, what I'm suggesting is that the board should make a motion that you review this policy and struck this particular sentence to make it accurate for present practice. And I don't think that that requires a warrant, it doesn't change anything substantively about the policy, so I suggest that it can be considered a review and not go through the process of warning today and then voting on it 30 days later. Members of the public may object if they choose to do so, please call me, but that's my recommendation and advice to the board.
So moved.
I, I completely lost this.
I'm going to bring it over to you.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept the review with the one minor revision for correctness to, to drug and alcohol policy FO7. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Beautiful.
So, that means the policy will continue as it has been posted online. I will soon pull that one down, strike this sentence, and get it reposted with the reviewed date, okay?
All right, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
There is no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Beautiful. Um, bills and payroll, they've been reviewed and reviewed to death. So, we have one, two, three, four warrants in the amount of $207,911.74, and three payrolls in the amount of $233,143.59, for a total of $441,055.33. All in favor of, I'd need a motion to approve that, I guess.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second, second.
All right, all in favor of approving the, the warrants and payrolls?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. All right, any other business?
Uh, just a reminder, the policy committee, I think we will probably be able to meet again prior to the next meeting, even if it is on December 1st, if you're available. Put in calendars for 6 o'clock. We'll probably have the G11, which is the acceptable use of the internet policy to work on, and hopefully, Durin and I can find some time to get that, uh-
Yeah, I want to also clarify the time.
That clarified, yes.
Okay, okay, so, um, we don't need an executive session. I just wanted, before we adjourn, real quick, December 1st, we, we are, are you planning on the policy meeting for December 1st or the policy meeting for December 8th?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm up to advisement from the members of the committee.
All right, are we going to make the first, folks? Are we going to have a quorum? I mean, I'll be here.
They are the two reviewing it, so.
I think we should make sure everybody can come. I can't be here on the 1st, so.
I know, Emily can't be here on the 1st. Anybody else got a problem with the 1st?
No, I can be here after.
First, okay. Policy committee on the 1st or the 8th? Does the policy, the 8th?
The 8th.
All right. What, is the December 1st meeting at 6:30 like all the others?
Yes.
All right, that's my only question.
December 1st at 6:30 will be the next one.
Anything else?
Board meeting.
Somebody make the motion.
Move for adjourn.
All in favor?
All right. I think we got a second.
We got a second now.
Uh, board members, you should receive the-
Somebody.